Okay, good afternoon everyone and welcome to our Wednesday, April 17th workshop. And everyone has their agenda up. The first thing, because we have some guests, we're going to go ahead and do the school board attorney position. And are you going to lead that for us? I mean, who?
Auditor, I think she said.
Oh, auditor is first, I'm sorry. Okay. Good seeing, I'll add that on. Okay, so we will do the auditor position first, and I believe that's Ms. Malay. Please take one of the...
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins. Thank you for, my name is Susan Malay, Executive Director of Financial Services. And today, we're continuing the conversation of internal auditor reporting directly to the board. At our last meeting, we presented information about surveys we've conducted with others, the top 12 school districts, and the, how they allocate their internal audit function, either internal staff, hired consultants, or a combination. We also shared information from other auditing firms. We had surveyed eight firms and received some responses, several of which were sent directly to board members. And then we had a presentation by our current external auditor, Moore Stevens Lovelace. So today, at the conclusion of the meeting, we were asked to further investigate obtaining a contract for services or further engaging Moore Stevens Lovelace for that. Following that, Mr. Brian Williams and I had a conference call with their firm. And I'd like to invite Mr. Williams up to render his opinion and recommendation based on that call.
Good afternoon, everyone. I think when we left the last meeting, I think there were some concerns expressed with respect to a potential conflict of interest for the external firm that was also performing our financial audits, also sitting in the role as our internal auditor with respect to the board. I know that the gentleman from the firm that spoke indicated that there wasn't a conflict based on the standards that are applicable to accountants. However, in a follow-up conversation with him, there was some friendly discussion whether or not he still maintained that position. And I think in giving advice to the district with respect to this, I am of the opinion that despite the statements that were previously made at the last workshop, that to avoid the appearance of a potential conflict in this matter, that I would recommend the district choosing a different auditor to serve in that role. And I think that's brought us to where we're at today. And I'm comfortable with that recommendation. It's a conservative recommendation, but it's a, I think in this role, when there's a scrutiny and a statute that's applicable, we're already, you know, venturing out with the employee as it relates to hiring a firm instead of an individual. I think it's in the best interest of the district to select a alternative firm to serve in that role. I think you'd be better served that way.
So based on that discussion, we continue to pursue other auditing firms who had responded to us. And I have prepared for the board and submitted in advance of the meeting materials for your review from a total of three auditing firms, one of which has already spoken. And one of the firms that has provided information is RSM US. And they had provided a significant amount of information. They had conducted due diligence into the House bill with which we must comply, and provided some additional information about the House of Representatives staff analysis of how this would impact all counties, including Lee County. And then they provided information on how they would perform the services if requested to do so. Based on that detailed level of due diligence and response, I invited representatives from the firm, RSM US, to join us today. We have three representatives here. Ms. Clara Ewing is the person that I've been interacting with to receive information. And if you would like to address any questions to me as to next steps, or if you have any specific questions for another auditing firm, they're here to field your questions.
Okay, does anyone have any initial questions? And can we just clarify then, the point that we're at right now is looking at the two minus MSL. And moving forward looks like selecting one of these and moving forward, or how does that?
At the board's option, those are, those are the complete external consultant options that we have. The board has also been entertaining hiring staff and looked at also the Lee County, Lee Clerk of Court for providing these services. So the, if the board was interested in pursuing the first year of services with an external consultant, I would imagine we'd be looking to hire a consultant before July 1st to be designated as our internal auditor to conduct a comprehensive risk assessment in compliance with the House bill. And then to develop an audit plan that would be a multi-year plan, identifying in the comprehensive risk assessment those risk areas that the auditor would recommend the board conduct audits on. And then annually, just to make sure it's really clear, annually, there would probably be an audit plan to say, we have this much amount of funds budgeted, we're estimating the scope of work. Say, if there were three audits at 50,000 each, if we have 150,000 budgeted for a year, we might, the board might choose to engage the auditor to conduct three audits at 50,000 that year. And then the next year, depending on the scope of areas to be audited, the budget situation, the scope of work would again increase or decrease at the board's pleasure.
Okay, and I believe in our last discussion on this, when we had pretty much decided on MSL before they had to pull out, that the conversation had already been that we would go with the three to, I mean, the six month to a year option, which was...
That's what I recall from, from last board meeting.
Okay, so board members, that's still on the table, that's what we decided before. So I would suggest maybe having each of them come up to speak with us and see if we have any questions for either one.
Great. Ms. Clara Ewing, could you please join the podium and introduce yourself and the firm that you're representing? And if any others, members of your team choose to speak, if they could also please introduce themselves and the firm they're representing. Thank you.
Try to get the right length away. I'm Clara Ewing, I'm with RSM US. We are the fifth largest public accounting firm in the US. We have eight offices here in Florida. Myself, Jennifer Murtha, who's with me, she's a senior director, she is our public sector consulting lead. And we also have Matt Blondell, he's a manager in the West Coast as well, focusing on public sector, construction, et cetera. The one unique thing about what we do is, we do this 100% of the time. I was at Collier's school board meeting last night. I am 100% public sector, 100% consulting. So we're working internal auditors, outsourced, co-sourced, project-based. We feel you, we understand what you guys go through as a board and the transparency, the scrutiny that you're under. You have your impact fees, you have your committee for that, your construction, IT. We understand those risks. And we understand that each, each school district has kind of, you know, different components to what their risk is. But I think the risk assessment processes, we're really able to really get to know what you all are like from your intricacies, how different you are, et cetera. But again, this is what we do day in and day out.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
I had a conversation with a... I had a conversation with a Collier board member earlier today, based on your invitation to reach out. That was impressive, by the way, that you invited us to reach out to our colleagues across the state. Very positive. I'll give the details of that to the board later while we're discussing this. But I want to know, what is, what would you consider to be a timeline that we could expect for the initial risk assessment? How long will it take you to do that for this district?
Depending from kickoff, for you all, I think a risk assessment could take anywhere from four to six weeks. Because what we want to do is, we want to make sure that we spend time individually with all of you, your senior leadership. We've done some of our, some of our own preliminary research, just trying to get to know you before we got here, but we want to do some more research on you all. But I think that we can have a deliverable between four to six weeks.
Okay, and then an audit committee. Do you have audit committees at the other school districts that you work with?
So Collier does not have an audit committee. Brevard's County Schools has an audit committee. We've been working with Brevard County Schools for over 20 years. They do have a, very much a best practice audit committee. So we see a variety of approaches and setups on how it's done.
Can you, can you flesh that out a little bit? Because I think that's something this board's going to have to talk about.
Yeah, so for Collier, for example, what they've chosen to do for right now, instead of forming an audit committee, we report directly to the board. And what they're doing also is, any outside agency reports, for example, your auditor general reports, they're having us review those reports, review how they're mediating and reporting, we do testing on it and see if we agree with how they're remediating, if they're remediating correctly. And then we report on that as well.
Okay, and typically, what's the composition of the audit committees with the school, for the school districts with whom you work?
We see five to seven is an optimal number for audit committee members. Typically, they're, they're citizens from the outside. You want to make sure that you have a financial person that kind of gets it, understands it, operational. For the school board, for example, we do have someone from an external audit perspective. We have someone that's from NASA, who's been part of safety for years. So they have a nice mix of the community and that understands the school board as well.
I guess this question is more for Dr. Atkins budgeting for this. What are we looking to budget? How are we looking to budget for this? Because this is an unfunded mandate, right? What are we going to have to give up to get the money to do this?
It's a good question. It is an unfunded mandate, it's not part of our FY 19 budget. You know, we, we're very limited in terms of the funds that we do have available. But yeah, since we're relatively short in terms of what we have remaining for the school year, I'm confident it can be covered. It just makes budgeting that much more tight. For FY 20, it would be part of our budget moving forward.
Okay, so it's doable from your perspective? Tight, but doable?
Tight, tight but doable. I mean, you know, we're going through, as you know, the DRA process right now with schools. And part of that is, you know, we gave them baseline budgets. So typically, when you give them baseline, it only goes up from there. You know, because we're adding positions back as we're working to meet the needs of schools. You know, so, so again, what reserve we do have for the rest of the year, you know, everything that we add in chips out, chips away at that. And I don't know, Kelly, if that answered it to, okay.
All right, and then transportation and fleet management was one of the things that I saw in the, the materials you provided to us. And I know we've had an audit in the past on transportation, but our system of student assignment is unique to Lee County. And we had to do a lot of teaching the auditor. Do you have the capacity in your firm to understand our system of student assignment so that we're not teaching you as part of the process? I don't know, Dr. Atkins, if you want to speak to your experience, I wasn't here at that time, so...
Yeah, I really, our experience under the transportation audit, not only was there a lot of education, but we actually looked at where those auditors came from and what they had done in their districts. And what I mean is, those people who were doing the audit had actually been in transportation in, I think, Broward and Miami-Dade. And some of the things they were actually recommending here would not, just simply were not transferable. And some of the other recommendations they made, when you go look at the history of those recommendations, they really would, would not have been a good recommendation to take. The lastly, there was a lot of time that was spent, there's a couple of things unique. One is you do have a student assignment system that's very, very unique. The other thing I think that is unique is the geography of Lee County with the canals, the river, the, the seasonal piece. And even though seasonal is a part of Florida in general, it is more of a part of Lee County. I think we're the fourth largest in terms of swell, you know, the increased traffic during season that they didn't really understand how all that came together, which became problematic as that, as that audit unfolded.
Okay, I don't, I don't know if you want to...
I invited Jennifer to come up here, again, she's our senior director. We have worked with numerous school districts with transportation, but I'm going to let her talk a little bit more about it.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Murtha, I'm with RSM. We've tackled transportation in a lot of our clients. As a matter of fact, we were just talking before we got here. I think that has been one of the number one areas where we see turnover at leadership and that position going vacant for some time months, you know, to be able to find that and deal with those problems. But we are control experts. So when we think about and we talk about internal audit, we are looking at the design of a process to be able to understand what could go wrong and what controls should be in place to mitigate what could go wrong. So you can apply that theory really to any topic. But I will tell you, as the fifth largest public accounting firm, we're able to find the resources within our firm. It's, it's actually incredible, the people. We just found this young guy out of, well, he's not a young guy, to me he is. This guy out of Cleveland, Ohio, who's got FBI experience and is now looking at, you know, security, physical security and awareness. And we've been able to bring him to some of our clients. So from a transportation standpoint, from an IT standpoint, whether it's purchasing, contracts, maintenance, all of those things that you guys are finding and that you're dealing with in your AG report, we've, we've looked at. There's none of us that just got out of college, we do this for a living. You will not find, you know, a 23-year-old showing up at your door so that you need to train them. As Clara mentioned, we spend 100% of our time doing internal audit. We don't do taxes, thank God. We don't, we have a separate IT team that would come in. You would still see your core team, so you're not meeting a new person every time you have an audit. But certainly, there's a vast majority of specialties that we would bring in and out of depending on what audit you needed. I mean, I think the next audit we're doing at Collier County is self-insurance. You know, we're looking at discipline up at Brevard. We've worked with Miami-Dade, we work with Broward, we've been in and out of Volusia. Matt just got back from the Keys, you know, working with Monroe. So that's also a nice benefit, because we can go to some of our school districts. And you guys are doing a lot of things right. And we can take those things that you're doing right to our clients and bring some of the things they're doing right to you.
I have a question for you. One of the things when we had discussed an internal auditor that reports to the board is having, if we used a firm, having that one contact person, can you describe that with...
It's a must, yeah. You, you want, we have typically what we refer to as a liaison. And that liaison works with a board liaison. So most of the time, we are not dealing directly with the board. Typically, we work with someone in the CFO's office to coordinate, to get us in the door if we have to go to different departments. They, they send the letter that says, you know, the email and copy us, and they say, hey, you know, these are our internal auditors, they're coming in, they report to the board, work with them, et cetera. But we always have one person. So in my example before, if we're bringing in, we work with this great guy out of California, he comes in and does some transportation stuff. Our guy from Oklahoma, I mean, Ohio, who does the physical security stuff. And again, those are specialties. Matt, Matt's in Bradenton, you know, he's going to come in and do construction and maintenance, that's his specialty. But you will have continuity with your core team and have experts that come in that sit with us and next to us. Does that, does that answer your question?
That answers, any other questions?
I think she was about ready to... I'll go ahead and ask my question, or make my comment. I think, you know, one of the things that, that we were interested in is, of course, having an auditing firm that had a great deal of expertise in the different areas. So I, I think that's important. It sounds like, you know, that's, that's what we're getting here. The other piece that, that I think that's important, we were in a conversation with our auditor yesterday. And one of the things that Susan had brought up in that conversation is, is we want to get better as an organization. So sharing best practices is something that we think's important. You know, if we find something that works in another school district that is applicable to one of our findings, for example, we, we would love to hear what that is. There's sometimes a little bit of reluctance, I think, at that level to do that type of thing. But in this case, it sounds to me like we would have that benefit, not only just within the state of Florida, but also, you know, across the US. So that's, I think, a plus.
Okay, if there are no, we do have one other firm that needs to present as well, so if it, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm, I'm hearing a lot that sounds like it's consulting, best practices, efficiency, that sort of thing. Are you prepared to take a hard look at finances? And, and, you know, one part of the statute has to do with fraud and waste. Are you prepared to do that as well?
Great question. So our team, I'm a CPA, Clara's a CIA, we have CFEs, Matthew's a CPA. We have CFEs, Certified Fraud Examiners. We've closed down charter schools, we've put bookkeepers in jail. Two years ago, we put three transportation people in jail who had a theft triangle, a fraud triangle, with vendors, very complicated and sophisticated, that was going on for 20 years. So if I misled you, let me take two steps back. We're auditors. So we go and dig into the detail, we go into the dollars and the cents. And because this is where we spend all of our time, we know taxpayer money is important. So whether we're minimizing an expense or increasing a revenue, we do a lot of work with FTE, helping our clients maximize that FTE input processes in place to tighten up attendance, those types of things. But yes, we put people in jail, it's part of what we do. It's like the dentist, it's not always fun, but you know you need to go, right? That's something that, that's like the core of what we do.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you for helping me clarify that. One last thing to, to address the teaching and the bad advice that, that you guys got from your last transportation audit. We have processes in place, we follow standards, and we have our own methodology. I think Clara shared it with you in the email. One thing we would never do, working in the sunshine and understanding the media and the politics and, and some of the things that you all deal with every day, we take pride in vetting both our issues and our recommended action. So I'm not going to come to this board and tell you that you need to hire 10 people to minimize a risk. We're going to work through it with the people that sit here and do and work in the... work in this environment every day, we're gonna bring in our IT people to see if there's a way to create solutions through the system, utilizing the system, create segregation of duties using innovation, and some of the things that we've seen at other schools, we understand that there's resource constraints, that, you know, what your priorities are, dollars in the classroom, so, we really pride ourselves in vetting not only the issues, but really coming up with as a team, and when I say team, I mean collaborative team with your folks who run this district, on how we can minimize risk and reduce opportunity.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Do you want to?
Thank you very much, um, those are the, um, representatives from auditing firms that we have with us today. There were a total of three, um, auditors who had provided information, and you spoke with one of them last week and one of them today. The other auditing firm provided a one-page summary of their, um, abilities to support the district, and, um, given that on Monday we needed to make a decision about how to proceed with the new information that Mr. Williams referenced, um, I reached out to RSM, and they were able to promptly be here, and the third firm is not, um, available to present.
Is that the cherry?
Correct, and that firm had, um, audited the district, um, very successfully for three years, I believe, from two thousand nine to two thousand and twelve, and I had heard the board make reference previously to, you were looking for someone who was completely independent and did not have real, working relationships with district staff, so, um, we have never, to my knowledge, worked with RSM in the past, so, I was aggressive at inviting them to attend and thankful that they were able to adjust their calendars and be here.
Okay, is there a, um, comparison as to, uh, costs and all, and, RSM, we just heard, uh, are ready to, to start yesterday, did I hear that correct? And what about the other firm?
The, um, when we reached out, we did ask for cost information from all three firms, and I believe that was in the information that we had shared with you, so, the rates or for, the costs for conducting a comprehensive risk assessment plan were similar from the one firm you have not heard from, and this firm, and the costs were, um, significantly lower than, uh, with the firm that you heard from last week.
Okay. Are there questions, anyone? No? Comments? Yes, ma'am?
In reviewing the backup information, I thought that RSM really did a comprehensive approach to this, and particularly in describing the methodology, really gave me a feeling of confidence. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
Actually, I would agree with Mary as well, um, I really appreciate all the, every, all the information you provided, it was very helpful for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Williams, for the opinion about the, um, lack of independence using our current external auditor in this position. I had concerns, significant concerns about that, plus I thought their price estimate was, was way off, um, the estimates that we've received from the other two firms seem much more accurate and in line with what I would expect. Um, I called a member of the Collier County School Board, and I'm gonna give you, uh, who works with, I'm gonna always call you RSW, by the way, just because, I'm terrible with names, and that's what I'm used to saying. I'll tell you, I took notes as she was speaking, very thorough, very professional, staff likes them, they are very thorough, they are very thorough, that's, she said that five times, they are very thorough, very accommodating, they report to the board, they met with each board member individually, they interviewed all board members at the beginning to gather concerns, then they did their risk assessment, then based on that, halfway through the process, they met with board members again, um, to decide what to have them audit, and then they came up with their audit report or their audit plan. Um, they presented that audit plan last night, and, um, in an example of how accommodating they are, they traveled all the way down to, um, help me, where did you go?
Everglades.
Everglades, Everglade City, because that's where they held their board meeting last night, um, they went all the way down there for their first report. Um, the risk assessment took about three months, um, and, and that's that, and the other thing too is, I'm sure you all know the name Erica Donalds, she was on the board at the time they chose this firm, and Erica was a partner in a very successful, um, auditing firm, um, and they felt very comfortable relying on her expertise in making this decision. I want to point out two real big positives, one to me was your understanding of, um, public perception and the impact thereof, and understanding that perception and reality are not always the same thing, but helping us manage that is huge, and then your analysis of the bill was outstanding, really outstanding, so, those are my comments.
Is Morgan anything?
No.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Atkins?
It would be helpful for me if, um, the board were to provide direction on next steps to Dr. Atkins, so we would know where we're headed to, thank you.
And I was just gonna mention that, um, and, Rob, you can weigh in on this, if we can, is this something that needs to have a, a solid, hard vote in an action meeting, I believe?
Yes.
So, we can take consensus now, and can we bring it up for, um, uh, Good Cause on Tuesday?
Well, you could, if you were able to negotiate an agreement with them that the board would be approving.
Okay.
You could provide direction today to the superintendent and I, to negotiate with them to enter into an agreement to provide the services that you've just discussed.
Okay, and?
I say, Tuesday's a possibility, but contracts are things that are negotiated, so.
Right. And, and I see smiles coming over there, does that, are you getting nervous when we say Tuesday? Okay, all right. Okay, so, at this point, um, the consensus would be to, uh, as I'm hearing it, to move forward with RSM, and to have the, um, Ms. Malley and the superintendent and Mr. Dodig, or whoever else needs to be involved to move forward with a contract, and possibly to have us, um, take that solid vote on Tuesday in our next meeting. Any, um, other comments? Okay, that's, I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
I have trepidation about the thumbs, I wish we could get away from that and just...
I know, and we, it's just, I have some other things to say about that, but for now, that's what we have, so, um, either thumbs up, sideways or down, and we have consensus anyway, so. Okay, and Susan has that, so we can move forward then, thank you so much to, for coming, we appreciate it, we'll get back with you as soon as, um...
Thank you.
...as we're able to, and thank you, Ms. Malley, for all you did with that. Okay, let us move on to the board attorney piece. Is that okay?
And, good afternoon, I think everyone's used to hearing from me on this issue, um, that being said, I think where we last left it at the workshop, um, the board wanted me to supply backup information for the firms, unfortunately, both firms that were still in contention for this position, um, were unable to be here today to present, um, that being said, I believe both, uh, firms did provide backup support, which was provided to the superintendent, and I believe subsequently provided to the board. Uh, the thing that I can, the, the statement I'll make with respect to the information provided, I, I didn't, you know, I went out and actually tried to find additional firms, even after our last workshop, I did reach out to Greenspoon Martyr, for example, who also services Osceola and I believe Martin Counties, unfortunately, given the construct of our board meetings, a lot of boards don't meet twice a month, we do, um, that created a, a potential problem for the, the firm that I reached out to. Um, in addition, I think Ms. Fisher also expressed it, I reached out to Henderson Franklin, so I actually did specifically go to that firm after that, um, workshop, and they didn't feel that they could provide that particular role, although they do represent us in some other capacities. I, it, I think with respect to this actual role, what I did provide the firms was a list of our board meetings, as well as the job description for the school board attorney, so that they had a complete understanding of what they would be getting themselves into in accepting this role, in addition to, um, the fact that the board would want some face-to-face interaction, in addition to any legal advice that would be provided, so, my understanding is both firms did provide a, uh, potential engagement letter, which identifies not only the attorneys that would be assigned to the district, but also, uh, rates, um, with respect to the work they can perform.
Any questions regarding the information that we received? And I have one, and tell me if it's out of line to do this, to ask your, um, recommendation, can I do that, or?
I, I do not have a recommendation, uh, again, I might, I think my role in this was just to try to reach out and identify firms that the board could consider, uh, I believe, uh, the information they provided, uh, I did look at it, so, uh, I won't say that, but I, I have to politely say, I cannot provide a rec, I, I don't believe it's appropriate to provide a recommendation, so.
Okay. Have you worked with either?
I have worked with Weiss-Sarota, uh, when I was at the district in Miami, they were one of our outside councils, um, in particular, I think I handled a DOA matter with them on a construction-related issue. Uh, Mr. Penley is our current ESC attorney for the district, and handles a lot of our ESC matters that go before DOA as well, so I guess the answer to both of those, that question is yes, I've, in different capacities, worked with, uh, both firms.
Did we get an hourly rate for each of these?
It should have been included.
It probably is, and I don't remember.
Uh, I believe they both submitted a packet of information, I believe the rate should be in the, um, engagement letter, I think, that was attached to both.
Okay, I don't remember what it said.
And off the top of my head, I believe Mr. Penley was two fifteen an hour, and then I believe Weiss-Sarota gave a, kind of a blended rate, which...
Okay.
Twenty-five for Penley and two...
Oh, it was two twenty-five.
I mean, for Weatherly and two fifteen for Penley, pretty much in the same.
And then Weiss-Sarota, I believe, gave a blended rate, 'cause they, what they did was, I, I believe they staffed it, um, so they have a lead attorney, and then they staffed it in the event he's unable to be here, and then I guess, in the event the, the district requires additional, you know, resources, they, I think he, they provided a litany of their attorneys that are, are available to assist that, that lead attorney, and I believe they provided a blended rate of, I, I wanna say it was two sixty-five an hour.
And Mr., tell me if I'm correct, Mr. Penley is the one that does the ESC, is that what you're saying?
Currently, yes, he does ESC matters for us, uh, in terms of due process on issues that may relate to placement or other issues related to ESC.
And, as far, I know he says that if, if we would need someone else, and he wasn't available, that he could provide someone, so, we possibly could run the risk of needing someone because we have a special meeting, and we would have to have someone that we haven't worked with previously.
Again, I don't, um, with respect to Mr. Penley, I, I, I believe he made all attorneys available, they're, they're kind of a, a very specialized firm, and, and I think their information they provided states that, uh, I think the other attorneys that work in that particular, with that particular, uh, company, uh, are actually in other states, however, I think he did in his, uh, proposal state that they would be available to assist the board if they needed, uh, assistance in that particular matter. I don't know if Mr. Dodig, he just walked in, um, has any more information, I believe he's worked with that firm a little bit longer than I have, so, uh, we were discussing, uh, Mr. Penley's firm and, and their bandwidth and capacity, so.
Well, I, I do know that, um, Kevin essentially works down here solo in some respects, and, I think, I just heard you say he's pretty busy and has clients around the state, I do know that, so.
Could you comment, Ms. Morgan?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
It appeared to me that Weiss, uh, the Weiss firm had more resources, and I felt like the, uh, the rise was limited, and did, did any, anybody else agree or disagree? I feel like the...
You mean that the Penley, which one?
Yeah, the, well, that's, the Rise firm was only limited to school board, where the Weiss firm, um, had way more resources and, and diverse with, uh, school board relations.
Ms. Fisher?
So, I just wanna back up a little bit and, and clarify that what we're doing here now, we have not, to my knowledge, advertised with Florida School Boards Association or Florida School Board Attorneys Association, and that what we're doing now is sort of a temporary...
Temporary, yes, right.
Situation, an interim situation to keep us rolling while we do that process.
Yes, because then we'd have more time to figure out what exactly we need and we want.
And then, you know, I do know that, um, Mr. Penley basically has provided, um, assistance in the area of our, our ESC, um, issues, and, I mean, and that could still be part of the picture, I think, I mean, we do contract out, uh, I don't know that we're changing our whole format right now, until we get, decide on what our legal, uh, team composition is gonna be, and who our board attorney is gonna be, and then what is gonna happen when expertise is needed in different areas, so I don't want us to throw the baby out with the bathwater while we're, uh, looking at this temporary situation.
Okay, yes.
My question is to, um, Mr. Dodig, um, would, Mr. Penley in doing our ESC, um, cases, would that be a conflict if he was also a board attorney, interim board attorney?
No.
Would that ever be a conflict, just to clarify?
No, Mr. Martin, and I continue to give advice and counsel in ESC matters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
And I heard Mr. Dodig's answer to that, however, I feel more comfortable with an organization that does not have, um, previous ties to the, to the school district, we decided that that was a good thing for the auditor, which I agreed with, and, and I feel the same way, um, with the attorney. Plus the fact that, um, you've already said that Mr. Penley is pretty busy with his duties right now, so, um, I worry that there may be some stretching, and, um, anyway, I feel more confident with the other group.
Anyone else?
Well, I, I mean, I think that we have to, um, open-mindedly look at the situation and recognize that, um, the need for expertise in different areas has existed and is gonna continue to exist, and I don't think that we should discount people who have successfully represented us in the past, because they might, I don't know, it might be a stretch, I, I'm not sure exactly what that meant, but I, I just really think that we need to be, um, very objective as we look at these, uh, potential, um, people to help us through this time.
Did you have any other comment on that?
No, I, I felt like it was an objective...
Okay.
...comment, 'cause I really don't know anything more than what I've heard about Mr. Penley, but I, I just feel like, um, it's, it's a good thing, even for this interim, to have someone that doesn't have, um, pre-existing ties to the district, or possibly is, is stretched thin already, as, that's what I've been hearing.
So, basically, we're contracting for an attorney to come in and sit at the dais during board meetings, and answer questions that come up from board members, is that what we're doing?
Basically, in the interim, is that...
I, I think it would allow for, obviously, any additional questions that would come outside of the dais as well, I think, uh, again, I forwarded them the job description, so again, they have an understanding of the role Mr. Dodig, uh, performs, and we can certainly kinda outline, um, that role i- i- is, but more specifically to them, so that they have a full understanding of that, but, uh, I, I believe Mr. Penley does, um, I also believe the Weiss-Sarota, 'cause I, I tried to explain to them the functions of the school board attorney and the roles they play, whether it be, uh, reviewing contracts for form of legal sufficiency, um, recommending board items, things, or assisting in board item preparation, those type of things, that's what they would be doing, they would essentially be, Miss, you know, it'd be a firm, eh, but filling the role of, that Mr. Dodig currently fills.
So, would, would the, um, I, I don't remember, Dr. Atkins, whether I heard this from you or from you, Attorney Williams, so, will this person be in the office, physically present on the day of board meetings?
Well, yes, um, and I did have that conversation, so, uh, Mr. Penley obviously is aware of that, um, with respect to Weiss-Sarota, my understanding is the attorney they've designated to sit in, sit at the dais, is currently the city attorney for the Marco Island, and so, my understanding is he also has meetings on Wednesday, so he'll be here all day Tuesday, and then do his meeting in, in Marco on Wednesday, so he's slated to be physically here all day on Tuesday.
So, so we are paying this attorney either two twenty-five or two sixty-five an hour to sit at the district on the day of board meetings?
That is correct.
So, so, I will commit to keeping my questions to those days, just so you all know.
I think we need to bring up the fact that's gonna come up a little later anyway, that in our decision-making, after we decide on this temporary attorney, that we have to look... to look at the fact of what Mr. Dodig does in concert with Mr. Williams right now, and how that's going to, when we make a final decision, how that's going to bleed over, or how they're going to work. And I know it had been mentioned at one time of having someone to work with you, separate from the board attorney, which would give Mr. Williams an additional person, and also the equity and diversity person that we're looking to hire, correct?
Yeah, and that's a little more related. I'll say, I'll put that in the non-legal box from the standpoint that that role that we were bringing was with respect to the Office of Civil Rights and Equity that we were attempting to create. We're essentially trying to parse out that role from professional standards where it currently lies, and have an individual that solely works with EEOC and Title IX matters, so that we can thoroughly and appropriately investigate those types of issues.
How, and we kind of touched on this the last time, as to how much time now Mr. Dodig spends doing things other than, you know, specifically just board things. Does that exist now, and how much is it? And because we're potentially looking at saying to you, when we have this temporary firm, and we're paying them this amount per hour, you're on your own. So how is that going to look, and how is that going to work?
What's the question?
Basically, how much you already help with the things that are done in the council's office.
In my nine months in this job, it's been fairly unique, because Mr. Williams came on as a new attorney in this district. So him and I have worked collaboratively quite a bit. I mean, Brian and I are colleagues. So I have taken on a little bit of a role, and Brian can speak to this, of someone who had done that job for 13 years. So there's a lot of collaboration. Relative to other work, sure, I give advice on special education matters, I give advice on custody matters, principal discipline sometimes, if Brian's not around, with students. So all of that overflow. And sometimes, just in general, I provide advice to, I work with Ms. Brooks a lot on the mental health stuff that the district has been doing. So Dr. Bohatch, I work with him on the code of conduct and things like that. So Mr. LaRosa, on student athletics. I mean, there's things that we continue to do, collaborate or independently of one another. So the district going to an outside council is losing some of that.
And that was my question. How is it going to, I mean, for now, we really don't have much of a choice. Because of time, we have to do something and have someone in place, even if it's just for Tuesdays.
Dr. McCullough, charter schools is a big part of this job.
Right.
We have three new applicants. I had to provide all of those applications.
So it really behooves us, even if we get the temporary person to as quickly as possible come up with a decision to do the rest of it. Yes?
In the Weiss-Sarota firm, they put in there their fee, but they also say there would be no charge for phone calls. Itemized costs would be reimbursed. But I mean, that, I mean, what does that mean? Because I'm in fear that they may regret saying that.
Call is one thing, but the research associated with answering the question is, well, that will be charged.
And that's what they mean.
Okay.
And through the chair, just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Dodig said, I think the model that has been previously proposed by Dr. Pruitt, essentially, I think, if you go with, let's say, Weiss-Sarota in this instance to serve as the school board attorney, I think they've outlined the resources that would be available to the district, and even more so, the fact that they have a first assistance, for example, that would back up the school board attorney. I think what Ms. Pruitt proposed is essentially giving me the same thing on my side for assistance in doing my daily duties, in terms of, at minimum, providing someone that could back me up in the event, you know, I'm away or, you know, or unavailable. And it doesn't need to mean to bring in a slew of attorneys. I don't think I require that, or, that being said, I think there are just a litany of issues that I get day-to-day, that yes, Mr. Dodig does assist me on, at times, that, you know, providing some support on both. I think addressing this as holistically, providing support on both sides would allow the district to be fairly legally represented in all areas. And I think if we're going to do it on one side, we should do it on both, just to make sure that we're adequately addressing the issues. And I have no problem articulating the various areas that I deal with, and I believe Mr. Dodig could do that as well, given he did it for 13 years. And I tell him all the time, I don't know how he did it, because I think I can handle a lot of work, and I can, but it's just, it is a lot of work. And my concern is always that I am responsive to principals, for example, when they call with a custody question, or responsive to our various departments when they have a contract-related issue, in addition to all the other roles, in terms of serving on our predetermination hearings, our ADA hearings, our student discipline hearings. It's just very, there's a lot involved in the staff attorney role, and I think just providing additional support, however, IEPs, I've had to attend a couple of those recently, and one which was six hours. So again, time away is time that some of those legal issues are unfortunately sitting on my desk. And I think in, you know, in moving forward, you know, I would only, again, recommend that we, you know, I obviously identify the areas where we need it the most, and I believe Ms. Pruitt did that through research as well, and just place the appropriate people as needed. And again, it, you have to start somewhere, so I don't think we go from, you know, one person to five, but I think, you know, maybe one other person may benefit the district. And I know we, in the past, had had three attorneys.
Right. And I don't know if this is for Dr. Atkins or Ms. Pruitt, how close are we to, you know, fulfilling that plan that you were...
She needs...
No, no, no.
Waiting for us. Yeah, we haven't made a decision.
Okay, all right. Never mind. Okay. So I guess at this point, the only thing is to get consensus on which of the two firms that we have, unless there's any other comments.
I just want to say that I had, in my interactions with you, I have confidence that you're not going to allow anything to fall through the cracks, or expose the district to any kind of legal issues in the absence of Attorney Dodig, and while we figure out, while we, as a board, get our act together and figure out what our next step is going to be with regard to the future provision of legal services to the district. I know that if you have to hire an outside attorney, you will do that, or make the recommendations to the superintendent, that you have to do that. So you have my confidence, you know, over the next, hopefully, less than six-month period of time while we work with an attorney to just sit up there.
Okay. And I don't think it was that we didn't have confidence in you. I think I was, my point was that I was concerned for you with all that was on your plate.
No, and I appreciate that, to be honest with you.
Yes.
My concern is the very same. I mean, he's only one person, and that we're coming into the summer, I mean, I'm hoping he is able to take a vacation with his family, so...
Yes, me too.
This is alarming. So we need to be able to be, you know, have it covered, and for he's, for him to be confident to be able to leave and take a vacation and not be attached to his phone.
Right. So, yes.
I was just going to say, the objective is to get somebody up here and to make sure that Dr. Pruitt has the information that she has, so that way she can do a national search, so we can get someone in here to replace permanently.
Well, and we have to decide what that looks like. I think that's our next step. And it would behoove us to move as quickly as possible, like you're saying, six months or less, too, because then we have the time factor of finding someone, so, yes.
And I think we need to decide what it looks like sooner than later, so that they can proceed with the work they have to do in finding that.
Yes. So first step is today for us to decide on the two firms, the Weiss or the Mr. Penley with resolutions. Is that correct? Am I saying it right? Oh, okay. I heard someone say something.
I just, I'm not clear on whether it's either or.
Well, I'll address that. We're not disengaging his firm. I actually am...
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, in any way. I mean, I think, and I don't want that to be an impression, we are still going to continue, matter of fact, I have a follow-up conversation with him on an ESC-related matter. So I don't think, if the board's decision to not choose Mr. Penley or his firm, that we would somehow disengage him on other ESC-related issues. At this point, my understanding is he's our go-to guy on ESC matters.
We're just talking about our process right now of having a board attorney. Okay, so how shall we do this? We will do a consensus for those in favor then of using the Weiss-Sarota firm? Is that, is that how I can do it?
Well, you're given direction, I guess, at this point, to Mr. Williams and I, to...
To move forward on whichever, right. Whichever one we choose. So that's what's on the table. Is everyone understanding? All right, so those that would be in favor of the Weiss-Sarota firm, thumbs up. One, two, three, four, and two sideways. So it does pass that we will move forward for you all to get together and look about, and see what we can do post-haste, since May 5th is coming very quickly.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I want to compliment Brian, because he took this on, and it's not his job, and he has done a fine job.
Yes.
And this board, to appreciate that, I know you do, but I just wanted to point that out professionally.
And we really do. We appreciate it. And you will get a vacation.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that my, I had thumbs sideways, because I could live with either one. So I didn't really have a preference.
Okay, and, yes.
Is it appropriate at this time to set workshop for another attorney, now that we have...
To get our, our next step is to look at our process.
We're going to have to look at the exact job description. Did we, I don't remember, did we just do a consensus? When we all submitted on the job description? I can't remember if we did consensus, or...
No.
I don't think we took a vote on it.
We didn't. We need to have a workshop to talk about the structure of the provisional officers.
And we will, and we can schedule it.
Good afternoon, everyone. No, so basically, you've been provided all of the information, and what I'm looking for is discussion around, do you want to keep the same job description? Do you want to change the job description? So that's one decision point. Then the other decision point is the structure of the legal services, and if you wish to maintain the current structure, or do a different structure. So those are the two decision points, and I left with the understanding that we would schedule very quickly after this one, a workshop to answer those questions.
And we will.
Because obviously, we have to decide on the structure before we advertise, because that can make a difference on that job.
Correct.
So I would just like to say, let's put a motion ASAP for a workshop on those decisions.
Okay, and that's, that we will do that. And staff on setting it, yes?
And we got to keep in mind that now we're going to be limited with a board attorney at our workshops, and so they have to be on the day, on Tuesdays, if that's what we're contracting him to do. I mean, we can have Wednesdays and Thursdays, and, I mean, we're going to be very, you know, we're going to be limited. So sooner the better.
Well, is, and I don't know, is that true? We only have them one day? Is that it?
Well, I think that's a decision when you negotiate the contract with the firm and what your needs are. I would...
Okay.
Well, and, but Wednesdays is, he's occupied in Marco Island, so there, I mean, today's Wednesday.
No, but when we get into the next part of the agenda, you'll understand.
And I just would, again, want to know if there's any other additional information or anything you need from me prior to that meeting.
Okay.
Oh. You, the way, the info, if I remember correctly, the information that you sent out had that hybrid, the blend, right? The new...
It's short, it made a recommendation to have sort of a general counsel, that then each consecutive year, you would add attorneys, so it would be blended, because you would still need to do outside services. And there will still be cases, and I think Brian would agree, even in Miami-Dade, if it's a specialty item or something, they still contract out. So I think you're always going to have a blend. It's just, we were looking at those positions where we were spending enough on outside counsel, that we could hire someone, and the expense would be either less or about the same.
Okay, because I think when we sent in, you asked for input from all of us, and I think I would also like to see a comparison. If we didn't do a blend, if we had a designated board attorney, how close or different would it be based on our input to the job description right now? Does that make, does that make sense? So there's two, it doesn't make sense?
It does, we, you guys provided me input on the auditor position, but the school board, I provided you the current job description and then the structure. So I haven't received any input on the, on the current since previous, but not since the new board has been put in place.
Is that a possibility, that we submit, we take, that all of us take a look at what the current job description is, and just to be able to compare how it would look to have a blended, a new blended position?
I think, I'll double-check. I think when I sent the information, I sent before, when we previously looked at this, we did that. We had the two different in what it would look like.
Okay. It's been a while since I've looked at it.
Okay. But just email me if there's something you need. I'm happy to provide it.
Okay, thank you. Our next steps on this issue will be possibly seeing a contract for Tuesday. They are going to negotiate on that, and then also setting up for a workshop to discuss the description, the job description, and the structure we're looking for, so that we can move forward with a permanent hire. Any constraints to that? I mean, anybody agree with that? Okay. All right. And thank you very much, you guys. Thanks for doing that. All right, our next item is the agenda review process. And before I begin, I also forgot to say at the beginning, we have a copy on our desk in front of us for everybody, the meeting norms. And I will, I would like to make sure we do that, even when we have board meetings, workshops, or any type of meeting, that we have our meeting norms available. I have been talking with Dr. Carlin about possibly in our plus and delta meetings, rather than having people come up with suggestions, that we would have these norms, and the pluses and deltas would be based on these norms. So we're not trying to figure out what we did well or not. But this is what we know going into the meeting, to be actively engaged, remain on topic, respect ideas of others, speak one at a time, raise hands, and begin and end on time. So we will deal with that later. I believe you all have in here, if you look at the agenda review process, but just a little prelim to that. When I was a teacher, one of the most important methods and things that we did in teaching was modeling. And, you know, you teach the information, and then you model it, so the students know exactly what it is that they have to do, and what the right way looks like. And I feel that as a board, we have to model what we are expecting to happen throughout the rest of the district, from the district employees all the way down to the schools and everywhere. We have to model what that looks like as the leaders of the district. Similar models to what I'm going to explain to you are already in process, and for one, Miami-Dade has it, and other districts have a similar model to this. And also, in corporations, I know when I worked in corporate America, we did similar things like this, too, prior to our action meetings. And it, just realize it's going to take a few times to get it all flowing like it should flow. And I have worked with staff to, as you can see on this schedule, we'll get to this later, that explains how we propose to make those changes. Basically, what I am seeing in, and the community is seeing, and many of us on the board are seeing, that we're not... seeing, that we're not communicating as clearly as we could. And we need to, as a part of our, our mission and being a world-class school district, that we have to communicate well as well. Um, so on here, I have, we can read this along. I've had discussions with the superintendent and several staff members. The superintendent has, I believe, mentioned it to staff members as well. And the whole, one of the purposes of this is to improve communication, uh, kind of tighten our timeframe and our way of work process. So the first number there is communication between board members and superintendent and staff. And it's difficult if one person meets on Monday and brings up one thing about an issue that's on the agenda and by Thursday, the next person meets and there's something that's come up in between. So to minimize that lack of communication, if we have one agenda review workshop where we go through everything that's on there, on there and all the questions that anyone has are brought up at that workshop. The staff would be um notified of those workshops as well and to be able to answer some of the questions. One of the things that it will help to alleviate, I believe, is the number of polls and is also the confusion, well, this person wasn't told this and this person was. And that's a lot to put on one person, on the superintendent to remember. Ms. so-and-so brought this up and Ms. so-and-so didn't, so I forgot to tell them. It creates more emails and more conversations. So to make it cleaner and crisper, that's why I'm bringing this forward. The staff will be better prepared to give answers and they won't feel as bombarded uh at the last minute with questions and things that, that come up. In the beginning, it's going to ca, cause us to be, have to do a little more reading a little quicker. Like today, um, we only had until Wednesday because this was already set. But if you look on the calendar, we have it set for in future, if you scroll down to agenda review workshop process. The superintendent and the chair will meet to discuss and finalize the agenda and any items um that they make sure are on the agenda. And that day is optional depending on when items are put together. And then day one, we have seven days that we have to advertise for a meeting. So on that first day, the agenda would be posted. The board members would have until Thursday. This answers your question about the Wednesday of the attorney having a meeting. It would be the third day, which would be the Thursday, that we would meet in the morning for an agenda review. If we have need of an additional workshop, like our briefing, it would be, it could be scheduled on that same day. For example, if we have the, the attorney piece that we need to discuss or other briefings that will come up. And I have sat with staff and gone through, until, I think, June 25th, we have gone through until the end of the, the school year and put in, taken the agenda items, the briefings and all the things that we must do, and they have been placed in this particular order. Um, thank you, Susan and everyone, yes.
Before we dive into specifics, just if I could weigh in just on, on a couple of the things that you mentioned, Madam Chair, regarding um this concept. I think one of the things that, that we have looked at as a staff, and I, additionally, I've spoken to, you know, other superintendents, I've talked to other staff members who have worked in other districts regarding the, how they operate superintendent and board and, and how do they handle this particular, these particular items. First and foremost, I would say that we meet way more than any district I have encountered. No district does, that I'm aware of, does seven hours' worth of individual meetings with individual board member every single week. Uh, and, and hours are going typically longer than that, plus the follow-up that goes with that. So I think that that, in terms of just efficiency, um, you know, I think is, there certainly can be some efficiency gained by not having those every single week. It doesn't mean that I wouldn't be available, but, but it does mean that, that I would have and staff would have more time to be getting the work of the district done. The second thing is what we find ourselves doing is repeating the same story seven times. And that means you're pulling staff members up to the meeting, you've got me in the meeting and, and trying to remember to make sure that everything that I cover with this board member, I cover with that board member. Uh, and then, of course, the, the chair brought up the, the timeliness, which I've also heard from other board members. You get, if you talk to him on Monday, you know, that's ahead of a board meeting, but if I have a meeting on a two, or a Wednesday or a Thursday, you know, that's, that's not as good timing in some cases. And that means usually they're last in line. Sometimes they're first. I mean, you know, we had, um, we had the item with operations, I was able to share with the two on Wednesday, um, but I wasn't able to do, share that with, you know, others until later in the week with, regarding Mr. Quirk, which, uh, you know, ended up going a different direction than that originally was going. But um, anyway, my point is that because they're spread out, uh, it does separate, you know, when people get individual information and the replication of it seven times. So I just think that if we, everybody's in the room at the same time, everybody hears the questions, everybody hears from staff, staff hears every, all the comments that are made by board members. I just think it, and it's in the sunshine, then I think conceptually, this is, this is a way better system of doing it. And it also is a, is a system that we've seen operate effectively in other districts. You know, uh, Mr. Williams has experience with Miami-Dade, um, and that's just one of, of probably several examples we could dig up. But it, it seems to work well there and, yeah, they call it committee. You know, so I think it's rather informal. Again, I've never witnessed it, but-
It's actually formal. They have their own. They actually have a room with a separate dais where, on the seventh floor in the building, and they actually, s, s, board is there, staff is here, and staff presents to the board on, and they go through the agenda, item by item.
And what I mean by informal is that, in, again, the way I picture it, is that there's at least more free flow of dialogue between staff members and board members than what, like, we currently have really in, in many of our settings.
That, that is correct.
Okay. Um, and as you'll notice in your notes, I put um reference to policy 1.04-3, which is relating to our responsibilities. And um, I'm not gonna read it to you, everything is there. Um, and like I said, I have, if you want to take a look at this document now, it shows how we will, you know, proceed with this for the next few meetings. It, it will be rocky at first as everyone is getting used to it and we will be, you know, we'll work out the kinks to that. But I really think it's gonna help our communication process. And I know personally, on Tuesday afternoons by like 4:00, 4:30, and I know we have a 6 o'clock action meeting, and staff is pouring out their souls as to things that we need to think about that are two weeks in advance. It's just way above my pay grade sometimes. So I think it will allow us to look at the agenda, review it, get all of our questions out and, you know, one person may have a question that you didn't even think about. And that way, we are collaborating and working together, getting all of our questions and answers done ahead of time. And um then staff still has, what, two, three days to work on anything that we possibly need to get answers to or fix. Comments? Yes.
So, um, I never did understand why we had to meet individually with the superintendent unless we had something that needed to be discussed with him personally. And I think this is an opportunity for us to be a lot more efficient, for everyone to hear the same thing at the same time, um, ready to try it. I think, I think it'll really be a time saver for the superintendent and allow him to do more of what he has to do, which is a lot. So I thank you for the, this opportunity.
Okay. And I think it'll save time for staff too. Like you said, they're running in and out like, you know, wildfire seven times a week, yes.
So would this be recorded or?
I think for the, the, since we are, have been discussing transparency so much, I believe so. We can take consensus on it, but I believe we need to.
No, it shouldn't be.
Yes.
Well, I, then I'm excited about it because I think this is just gonna help us be more transparent and it will simplify the process that you have on a weekly basis.
You won't have to say it seven times and there won't be any misunderstandings, hopefully.
Yeah, I, I like it for several reasons. First, it's, it's more efficient because I know, I find myself very piecemeal and I'm sure Dr. Atkins feels the same way because there are lots of times, Wednesday at 4 o'clock, I'm making a special trip to come for that one meeting. I kinda like, and I think it'll be better for all of us, where we have an, we, we can kind of work out our own calendars more easily that way because we'll know, hey, Tuesday is still our action meeting. Thursday morning, definitely Thursday afternoon, a good possibility. So there's Tuesday, Thursday and, you know, we won't have all the little piecemeal, nor will the, the staff and the superintendent. So I think, um, yeah, I, I agree that there are probably some quirks that are gonna need to be worked out, but I, I like it because I'm one of those with the Wednesday at 4 o'clock. And so a lot of things that some other board members are, have already talked to Dr. Atkins about on Friday or Monday, I haven't had that opportunity. Sometimes we're first, as you said, but it-
But it allows you to hear.
But more often not, exactly.
And then, you know, I often use the example of four people standing on different corners and there's an accident. And when the police come and interview you, they're all gonna say something slightly different. But if we all are standing on the same corner watching the accident, God forbid, then we would know exactly what's going on. And sometimes my thought process may not be the same as another board member, so I may not think of something. So here is, here's our plan. Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, I think it's a great idea, but we need to make sure that on those Thursdays, that we bring the questions there.
Oh, definitely.
That way it's handled one time and not-
And another, another kind of step, I'm kind of uh treading lightly to, to say too much at once, but another step we talked about is that when you look at the agenda, if you have a question about item 7B, then you could let staff know ahead of time so we know, as we're looking down through the list, nobody has any problems with 7A. So that particular staff person doesn't even need to be here. And if it's, if you have the question, that's even better. And I'm not trying to put a whole lot of pressure on everybody to come up with all of your questions, but ideally, we could have the questions prepared. They, the staff that would be responsible would have time to be prepared and come on Thursday morning. And I know you have a question about this, this is what we've come up with. So.
Yes, ma'am. Mary, Ms. Fisher was there.
Well, yeah, so um, this is a really good idea and I think that maybe now that we are looking at this potential to meet as a group to um review the agenda questions that we might have. And I have often sat in a board meeting and heard another board member ask a question that I might not have thought about because our areas of expertise and interest are all different, which is a good thing. So that, so I like that for this reason too, but I think as far as we're ironing out the details about how we're gonna present the questions and all that, maybe we could do that as a team.
Okay.
To, you know, to build the plan for that.
Okay. We can do that.
And if we reach consensus on this, will you be talking, you and Attorney Williams, he's gone, be talking to the-
Sure.
Attorney with whom we will contract about his or her availability on these days?
We'll do something, yes.
Um, and then I wasn't sure about the inclusion of policies 1.4 and 1.5. Are you suggesting changes to those policies?
No. They were resources to, as to why we did this and why we needed to do it.
Okay. And then the, the last thing is, um, looking at our board protocols, um, right now, we, we require or request a 24-hour notice for any polls. I think that if we're gonna continue to have polls after we've met as a board to discuss the entire um agenda, then we should extend that time to give additional time to staff and the superintendent to respond to any questions that might come up surrounding polls.
Well, the way the process goes is after the Thursday, there's, Thursday morning, there's still the Friday and then the Monday if there's any uh questions. And I, I mean, I'm not suggesting we get rid of the 24-hour poll.
No, I'm suggesting we extend that to 72 hours or more than 24 hours because I think part of the problem has been running around at the last minute. And I don't become aware of, of questions that the board has until, you know, walking into a meeting sometimes and questions may linger after we've met. So I just wanna, I wanna clean up that process for us so that, you said one of the purposes was to cut down on the number of polls. I think that if we hold ourselves accountable there as well, extending the period of time for-
Well-
And requiring that memo, letting the board and the superintendent know why the poll is going to take place.
Well, first of all, I, I do believe that the process is going to cut down on polls because we will have questions answered. And my hope is that there will be less because we will have more answers before going into a meeting per se. And I, I'm not sure I understand and why we'd need an extra amount of time, however, that would require policy change.
No. It's a protocol, it's a consensus.
Okay. All right. Um, shall, I, I mean, I would suggest, let's try this, let's see how it flows. And if we find that we're running into a lot of, a still, an exorbitant amount of polls at the last minute or the last 24 hours, then we revisit it. Thoughts?
I would hope that having this meeting would prevent having polls because all the information will be disseminated to all of us, so if there are questions at that time regarding this, then we handle it at that time. So I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I, I would say number one, everyone will be pretty in tune with the questions that are going on, but this certainly won't preclude polls, uh, considering our current way of voting, that we have the consent items and we may have 15 different consent items. And, and I think it's something that the community on, on some of the big ticket items and also items that may be controversial. In other words, that we, you know, we only have a consensus. A consensus doesn't lock us into a vote for the action meeting. So first of all, this won't preclude polls. And secondly, I, I think it's, it's good for the community to hear because yes, can they tune in to the workshops? Sure. But public can't speak at a workshop, okay? Public does speak at an action meeting. Secondly, you're gonna have more people tuning in, more people coming to a board action meeting than you ever will for a workshop and probably for the, for the briefing. So um, you know, let's not go all pie in the sky that we're going to always agree because we can all discuss something and still come out of that workshop with different opinions, whether we would vote yea or nay. Dr. Atkins and I talked about um possibly, remember when we talked about um kind of the old way or their superintendent recommendations? Um, I, I really think for the transparency piece and for um the sake of the public. And even, even with that, if you have that opportunity, somebody may want to pull- have that opportunity, somebody may want to pull for a positive statement, and, and to, as a matter of fact, when-
Oh, definitely.
When Dr. Atkins and I were discussing it, Mary, your name was brought up, as somebody that liked to do that, to call attention in a positive way to something, and I think that would be something excellent for the community, because I know a lot of people in the community, if they're not used to the way things are done, there'll be that vote, if there're no polls, and they're like-
What happened?
What happened? It's all done?
And no, it is, it's not to, to stop polls, totally, I, I totally agree with that, and there's positives and negatives on that as well. Yes, Ms.?
So, so I think that we can always pull for discussion, and I think that the, the benefit of this group meeting will be that when we have specific questions, those will be answered. We can still pull and talk about it, but it will not necessitate, like we had at our last meeting, being here till 9:30 at night, going over and over and over something, because the information will be there, board members will be satisfied, you can say, okay, I'm gonna bring, call attention to this, and here's why. One, two, three, keep it to two minutes. And, and that'll be-
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be a benefit. It'll be more efficient.
Okay, if-
Oh, no, actually, I agree. I mean, that was the thing, it's, it's healthy to have a discussion.
Definitely.
And positive or negative, the community wants to see where people stand, and if you're always saying yes to everything, and, and everybody's go along, get along, it does not bode well in the community, and the, the discussion is important. So, I, we can eliminate polls, and, and I pull things to be positive as well, so I, I wouldn't support changing anything with polls.
Well, no, this is, that's not what this is about. It's not about, we, we're talking about modeling behavior that we want to see in the district, and on this board, and throughout every aspect of Lee County Schools, and, and how we work, and communicating, and, like you said, there are gonna be times that we disagree. The ultimate goal is to get to where we can agree to disagree. And I, I really wanna give a plug to Ms. Morgan, how well you have done that, that even at the last meeting, you disagreed with something, but, you know, you state what you have to state, and we move on, and that's, that's the way of work, that's what we do. We're not always going to agree. So, shall we just take consensus? It's that we're going to do our best to follow this, and work out the kinks, and move forward at least until the end of the school year with this process? So, I'm in favor?
We have consensus.
Okay, we have consensus. Thank you. Any comments from those that were sideways?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should give it a try, and see how it works.
Okay.
I think in essence, it sounds like a great idea, and an opportunity for us to be more cohesive, have all the same information, because that seems to have been a stumbling block. So, that being removed may be helpful to us moving forward.
Okay.
I don't wanna make any comments, please.
Okay. Okay, so, that being said, we are going to move into our first agenda review process. If you will turn in board docs to the agenda for April 23rd, and this will be our first attempt to see how this works.
Madam Chair, we did have a, a conversation in cabinet, just briefly about this, but we really didn't talk about how we're gonna present, so, you know, bear with us. I think that what-
It's fine.
What we would like to do, I think, is, is, and I would ask the chiefs to help me with this, but we'll start, Dr. Krill, with academic services, and maybe just briefly go through the items on, under academic services, and see if we have any questions, so they know, board members hopefully have had an opportunity to read, but if they haven't, at least, you know, we can give them a very quick overview, and then if we have some additional questions, and Dr. Krill and her staff are available for that. And I will, I'll go ahead, and, yes, if you come up to the podium, that'd be great.
Actually, that's excellent. That's what we had in mind, that we would take each section, and if anyone has questions as you're going through it, then we can stop and address those, or, you know, table them for further information. Thank you.
I just, I have to say that I'm completely unprepared to do this, because I have not looked at this agenda. I had no idea what these topics were about on the agenda today, so this might, I ha, I mean, it takes me hours to read an agenda and the backup material, and this is the first time I've opened this meeting, so I feel really unprepared to do it. Not that I won't play nicely, and get along, and try to whatever, but I, I can't ask any questions until I've, until I've read this.
Well, maybe as we're going through, and you hear something, it may trigger a question in mind. Yes, ma'am?
Listen to this, Chris. I'll have to agree with Ms. Patrica, because I have-
We both like chocolate.
Well, and it, I, ladies, I know-
I know-
With short notice, however-
I'm unprepared to look at this, and re-
That's okay.
Ask questions.
Well-
And we, we'll work through it.
Yeah, I, I mean, as am I, you know, I mean, we, this has been literally a, you know, building the plane as we're flying it, so to speak, and, so Dr. Krill didn't know that she was coming to the podium, and, so-
Hi!
So, I think if, if you could, maybe bear with us, and then, this can give us all an opportunity to see, well, in the future, the next time we do this, what are some things that we need to do better in terms of being prepared? You know, we don't want, we know that the board is going to read materials in advance when they're provided, and we also know that the board doesn't wanna hear lengthy staff presentations that are just redundant, just that we know. And so, our intent here really is to touch quickly highlights, and then see if there are questions available, and then as we go through this, then we'll take your feedback, and then make it better the next time.
And can I just say for, for the board members, if you're not familiar with the little, what do you call it, comment button on the side of the agenda, you see it on the right, that you can, as you're going through the agenda in your review, you can click on that and add your notes to it. One caution, make sure that you click save at the bottom, or you, and it will turn yellow when you add something to it. So, you have everything right there together, and it will turn yellow. If you don't save it, it'll still be clear, and what you did has gone away. So, make sure that you do that. Before you begin, I had one question. On the academic services part, there are several things, and this, is Jen still here? Yeah, we had kinda talked about this. There are several items about Head Start, and I'm wondering if in future, and Jen, you may wanna answer that.
Jen and I had the opportunity to talk this morning.
Oh, good.
And she shared with me your question, and so, I certainly don't want to speak for Jen, but her, as we talked through it, some of the rationale behind the order is that she's got action items, and although, in this particular case, we're talking about the Head Start items, that we have the five items, and those are five items that, for example, when we're talking about providing a heads-up on the one-to-one meetings, you may recall that Jeannie came on each of the one-to-one meetings, and provided an update regarding the Head Start items. But the reason that they are ordered the way they are, is that she's got the action items, and then she's got the grants. So, although they are, they are all under the heading of Head Start, some are pure action items, and some are around grants.
Okay, awesome. And, and for the sake of everyone else, I had asked the question that under E, Consent Academic, if there was Head Start, and there were five things, if we could do two, A, B, C, D, and F, so we, it would, and Jen is saying, no, thank you very much, I will be quiet now. When Jen says no, you sit back and you listen, okay.
The only way we could do that is if we added different sections, and if we did it for Head Start, we'd have to do it for all the other departments, and, you know, things like that. So, as it stands, no.
All right, just tell me no, I can handle it. Thank you.
Mrs. Hargreaves?
Yes.
Mrs. Hargreaves, it would be, I guess, a question for Angela, if she's gonna-
Well, let's, let's go ahead and do-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just realized.
Okay, let's, let's, we're gonna do, for the sake of everybody understanding, we're starting with Agenda Item E, Consent Academic Services, and kinda going through. In future, after everybody has, you know, had an opportunity to go through it, you'll have your comments on the side, and be able to just click on it and say, yeah, I have a question about this one.
So, we do have 12 items under Academic Services, and this is the time that we'll be bringing contracts moving forward, agreements, those types of things. So, the next few months for us are, are kinda busy, as we prepare for the upcoming school year. One of the items that we have is a continuation. I know for some of you, it may be new, and that's why Pete's here, but the first one is under the approval of the contract for our, with the Board of Commissioners and the Lee County for the Summer Drivers Ed Program. Is there any information, Pete, from a quick synopsis that you can give on that?
Well, it's funded, zero dollars to the district, funded by Slossburg Funds. So, it costs the district zero. We've got two openings for Summer Drivers Ed, and Mr. Dotig drives without his hands, and Ms. Carlin is speed, so-
And I do.
So, this will be in 14 of our schools.
Yeah, for all, all schools, one month, Summer, Summer Drivers Ed, and zero cost. Yes.
Can you say about how long we've been doing this in this district?
Right, that's important, because I had that last time.
In my seven years here, at the district level, I don't, I don't have that institutional background. Mr. Dotig?
No, I don't know.
Summer DE, for seven years at least, since I've been in my role, so.
So, we don't have the amount of time that we've been doing Drivers Ed, but we do have that in 2012, the Lee County Board of Commissioners approved this funding in order to support this particular grant.
So, are we gonna have about the same number of students? Has it changed up or down?
Well, it's up, because we've got Benita now, so-
Okay.
So, roughly the same.
Okay.
So, basically, we've got 14 schools that will have 24 students.
One month.
For one month.
One-month program. Zero cost to the district, includes gasoline and maintenance.
Okay.
Any other questions about that topic? Okay, thank you.
That was easy.
Thank you, sir. All right, Jeannie, we have a few of the Head Start pieces here, and as we mentioned, we have kind of given a heads-up on some of this. Are there, so this may be an opportunity for us to ask if there are any specific questions around Items 2, 3, and 4, which have the, the Head Start Transportation Waiver, the Head Start Partnership Contracts, and the Head Start Program Community Assessment.
I have one on 3. Is this just a specific number, like the private Head Start programs, or is this, is there a list of all of the Head Start programs?
Those are the programs that are covered under the Child Care Partnership Grant. We have a special grant, and the intention of that grant is to help community providers raise the quality of services to the same level that we have in the district early Head Start programs. It was a special grant, we're in our fifth year, and so, we have five contracts that are essentially the same with different providers, where we go in and we help provide services to improve the quality of the program, and funding as well.
Anyone else?
Ms. Jalen Oley?
Yes.
So, I put my little question in, but I was looking at the contracts, and I see that, I, I would assume that they're all standard, because they all seem similar, but they don't list the facility addresses in the contracts, but I do see it on the insurance liability forms. But, but not every one of them has the facility, on the li, on the insurance forms have the facility addresses. Shouldn't that be the case, or, can someone advise me on that? Is that, is that a legal question? I don't know.
If it is, I'm not sure there's a requirement for the physical location in these agreements, yeah.
Okay.
We've been signing these for, Jeannie said, this is the fifth year.
Five years.
Yeah.
And they're all over the county.
Okay.
Okay, we will move on then, to the approval of the advancement via individual determination grant proposal, which are AVID grants. This is a, a grant that we received that allows our teachers in our schools to attend the AVID Conference.
The question I have is, is this an increase or a decrease? I know at one point, they were not sending people to the national conferences, but actually having someone come in to do training, to save money. Are we still doing that?
We tried that last year, we only tried that one year, and the, I still think it's a really good idea, in order to save some money, but in working with AVID and their billing at this point, we do not, we are not planning for this summer to have something in-house. We also recognize that because of our planning processes, and the, and the different strands that the AVID Conference is able to provide, that we were not able to meet all of those strands. And, and so, therefore, this grant is back in place. The rationale behind last year's move, it really came from our Title I schools, where they were talking about the possibility of utilizing the Title I funds, and, and being able to invite those schools that are non-Title I, to be able to take advantage of the professional learning as well. So, that was the rationale behind what we did last year, but we are just not at that place with the AVID organization to move forward with that.
So, they'll be going back to Tampa this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Dr. Krill, we might have jumped over Fiddler's, I believe.
I'm sorry, did we jump over Fiddler's? I'm sorry, thank you. So, I certainly didn't mean to jump over Fiddler's, which is number five, and so, we have our team here.
Do you wanna give us the short, short?
Sure. Fiddler's is a discretionary project of the Department of Education, and it's been in statute since the 70s, and Lee County has been the fiscal agent for our Island Coast Center for a number of years, serving Lee and Collier Counties in the Exceptional Student Education Department.
And this agreement does what?
This agreement continues our partnership through the next fiscal year, and we just were notified Monday that they increased us one time of about $40,000. So, it's an increase from last year.
Increases are good.
And I have our grant administrator, Dr. Deidra Phillips, here as well with us.
And so, Deidra not only works with us, but she works with the other districts as well, and she visits them, and, and is able to not only share our best practices, but to learn best practices from our other districts.
Would you like to address us about what you do?
Yes. I am new to this position this year, as the coordinator for Fiddler's, and again, like they said, we, we serve both Lee and Collier Counties, and some of the areas that you see in the document on the board docs. We support Child Find for children between ages of three and five, that might be suspected of having a developmental disability or some delay. We also support professional development, technology, parent services, as well as inclusive education through FEN, which is the Florida Inclusion Network, and that's how we serve both districts. There's a center for every district in the state of Florida, and we serve Lee and Collier in particular.
Okay, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding Fiddler's? I don't know about you, but I always kinda look for a violin.
Thank you.
All right. So, number seven is the, again, the approval of the Early Head Start Child Partnership Grant Proposal. So, we've got seven, and then we've got eight, which is another Head Start grant. I'll just ask again, since these are things that you have had information, are there specific questions that you have regarding these grants? This is an ongoing grant that we have, Jeannie?
Do we have-
Well, I would have to read those to know if I have a question.
I understand.
So, I probably will be back with you on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything from an overview that you might remind people about the, we have the approval of the Early Head Start Child Care Partnership Grant, and then we have the approval of the Head Start Grant?
The Partnership Grant is the one that I just spoke about, which the purpose of that is to help improve quality in the community. The other one is the Head Start, Early Head Start Grant, which- which is just the reoccurring grant that supports our District Early Childhood Programs.
So, the agreements that came forward that were discussed first, these are the grants that support them.
Any questions? Nope, we're fine, you can move on.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number nine, which is the improvement, approval of agreement with the University of Central Florida Board of Trustees for the Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transition Program Grant. This allows for our, our students with disabilities to be able to be served at the Technical College and will be providing a person that will work directly with them in helping them enroll into the programs and to help serve as a support for them in our Technical Colleges, really making sure that this is an opportunity, as it says here, this is a How I Reach Employment Hire Grant as we look to help our students with disabilities in the Technical Colleges gain employment. Any questions about that? We're very excited about that.
Is that a new one?
It is new. It is something that our Technical Colleges have really been working to get in place for a little while, and we're very excited about the opportunity that's been afforded to us. Our next items are Mr. Dr. McCullar's items for our Charter Schools, and I'm gonna ask him to just come right on up here. And maybe you can help give us an overview of these items.
Sure. We have, I think we have three items, right? Three, three applications for new Charter Schools. Charter School processes are complicated. So, I'm happy to have any questions you wanna know. But generally, there are two phases for a new Charter School. Phase one is where the district staff, the expert panel, reviews the Charter School application, looks over using the State Model Review Form in hundreds of different areas to make sure that there are no critical deficiencies. If there are no critical deficiencies, then we present it to the school board to approve their application. It's a conceptual approval. If that approval is granted, then the Board Attorney and I will negotiate a charter with the applicant, and that will be the actual charter contract that you issue. We'll bring that back in a separate action by June 30th. So, it's two parts to a new Charter School operation. Yes?
So, that's phase two?
That's phase two, correct. The charter itself is phase two.
And, and these documents are phase one?
Correct.
Okay. Cause the question I had on number 10, Collegiate Academic, it talked about an amended application because of deficiencies.
Yes, um, okay.
Well, my question, maybe this don't help.
All right.
My question is, all, all three of these are new.
Yes.
So, this one, though, has submitted once before there were deficiencies. It's gone back to them?
Well, it's even more complicated than that.
Okay, well, don't go there.
How far down does rabbit hole do you wanna go?
No, we don't need to find the rabbits, just.
In this initial phase, if, if there are, if there's a serious critical deficiency, we would just stop the review and say, and we would recommend that you deny the application. If, if it's a technical problem, something easily fixed, we're required to give them a chance to revise, and we do that. And so, they've been through that process a couple of times. So, it, there's nothing left in it that we could object to, and it now meets all of the requirements we would have for orderly operation.
Okay. And kind of a general question on the Charter Schools. I understand that we had been looking at accelerated learning. Is it, what is it called?
Accelerated Academy?
Yes.
Acceleration Academy.
Acceleration Academy. Um, and with that one, we, we get money back?
That's not a Charter School.
Right, okay.
It's a program.
Okay.
And we would not necessarily get money back. We would, from the FTE that is earned for the students, we would get up to 10% of that amount for the FTE earned. And so, as we mentioned, we are still in the process of working through that, looking through the contract, making sure that, that we're really comfortable with bringing forward that as a recommendation.
Yes, Ms. Juvina.
So, my question is, but Charter Schools, we get no FTE money. We get, we get nothing. This goes, that goes directly to the, the charters, and that. And when I read these charters, they're doing essentially the same thing. They're looking at the dropout students and recruiting those, and that's what that Acceleration Academy did the same thing, correct?
Not in essence. The Acceleration Academy, these are looking at students that are currently, would be within the age realm of our student population as, as an additional choice for our students. The Acceleration Academy is looking at students that have already dropped out of school and would go and try to identify, find them and bring them, encourage them to come back in and finish their high school diploma.
I should, should also clarify that for Charter Schools, which Acceleration is not, in, in the case of like this collegiate, this proposed collegiate school, the district does retain an administrative fee. We retain the maximum amount that we're permitted to by statute, which is a small percentage of the first 250 students, depending on the school status. So, there's a, there's a small portion that does get retained.
Okay. And I'm gonna bring up my crazy question again. We've got three new Charter Schools, and the numbers that they're looking at absorbing, how, and this may be for someone else, affecting our seats and FTE plans for the future?
So, one of the things that I might encourage Jeff to speak about is the, the statute that's in place about charters and what's required for us to, to allow from a district in, in regards to the consideration for charters. And, and with that, we don't necessarily get to dictate within their charter application the numbers of students that, that they propose to support.
Yes, that, that's exactly right. If, if a Charter School proposes to serve an immense number of students that, more students than exist in the area they described, we could probably deny that successfully. We could say, "You're inventing students that aren't actually alive yet," and that would be grounds for denial. However, they don't usually do that. They just, they just put a pretty rosy projection. We, if the, if the projection is tremendously rosy in our negotiation process, we ask for, "Well, how about a 50% budget as well, in case you only get half as many as you expect?" And if, and then in the final phase, when we actually do the contract, we establish a minimum enrollment for the first year. The minimum enrollment is usually either 65% of their first-year projection or 120 students. And we, we choose the smaller of that as the starting point for the negotiation. Schools that are below 160 students often struggle financially. Schools that are below 120 don't exist unless they have some other reliable source of revenue. So, that's, that's where we kinda set those numbers to start the conversation. We cannot deny, based on lack of need. You know, we could say, "Well, we already have six or seven alternative high schools. How many more can we support?" That's a, a market question. That's up to the applicant to decide if they want to take that risk or not.
I know, cause when I visited, what's the one, Palm in, in Lehigh, and they did say their numbers were down because of the economy, cause, because kids will go and work rather than going back to get.
Yes.
Finish their degree. And yet, they're opening another one in Buckingham, so.
That's exactly right, yes. And, and you know, district enrollment is, is trending up, and charter enrollment is trending down. And the applicants know that.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
So, another question, this is for Dr. McCullar's. So, these three charters, does it, we vote for them, if we vote for them and they, does this necessarily mean they will open their doors in, in 2020? Or is, could they, these fall to the wayside and only one actually come to fruition and?
Okay, good question. If, if.
I'm not familiar.
We approve the application at this point, and then approve the charter itself in the second phase, then these schools will open a, a year from, from the next school year.
Right.
And we're talking about 2021.
Yes, 2021.
They can also choose to defer a year if they're not ready or if they need time to plan, and actually open in 21, 22. So, there's a, this, these are, this is a long-frame, long-term project when you get into the Charter School business. So, some schools, we have had some that never opened. Not too many. We had one school that we closed before it opened because they did things like forget to hire teachers. So, that's, oh, that's a great story I could tell you someday. But, but no, it, it is possible that they would, they would never actually come together, but it's not that common.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Creel.
Thank you.
You did wonderful not knowing.
Thank you.
Next, we have Business Services.
Gotta.
Our school. Yeah, as far as the time, we said it, I think 1:30 to 3:30, and I believe we said to take time to go ahead and finish this as quickly as possible.
I've gotta.
Yeah.
I've got childcare issues.
Okay. Um, okay, well, we will go as, as quickly as we can.
All right, I gotta, I have to go.
Okay.
I mean, I've gotta get my daughter.
Okay.
I'm prepared to stay.
Anyone else?
I have a four o'clock appointment, so, I gotta go.
Okay. Anyone else?
This is not a rejection of the process. This is, my daughter literally is at the pool waiting for me to drop stuff off for her. I better go.
Drive carefully.
Yes.
Is everyone else okay to continue?
You're up close.
Continue.
Yes. Okay.
All right.
Okay, let's move on. Business Services.
Okay, there's a couple of, there's a couple of things on Business Services, and I'm gonna let Mr. Santiago talk to the first one. That's his item.
The first one that you'll see on the agenda is an approval for us to open up a new bank account. Per Board Policy 6.05 Investment of Funds, any new bank accounts require the Board's approval. And we're gonna go ahead and open up a new bank account to track all of the half-cent sales tax.
Okay.
So, that's approval for that account to be opened.
Question I have on that is, is to have you define short-term and idle since most of our funds are pretty much already allocated, right? When they come in, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so idle is not necessarily allocated, cause remember, you're talking budget versus cash. So, the budget allocates the money out until the expense occurs, we don't pay for it. So, the idle funds are the funds that are sitting there, and they're being invested in things as we're waiting to pay this stuff. They're not just sitting in an account. They're being invested, and this is the account for all that stuff.
I know why that was difficult for me. I don't have anything sitting waiting to be spent.
You and me both.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions on that one?
Okay. The next ones have to do, they're, they're, they're regular monthly ones that we bring forward to you. The first one, I think, is the Budget Amendment to the Board, yes? So, that one is really the, it tells you what budgets were changed from one month to the next and what those amounts are. So, the backup gives you the, it's by function and object. It gives you that information. And on the, the Board Agenda page itself, if it, what we speak to on this one is anything where there's an adjustment of $80,000 or more, we will speak to that and tell you what that adjustment was for. And we can answer questions on anything below that, but we figure that $80,000 is the point where you probably would have questions as to why that movement of funds occurred. So, we speak to those specifically, but we can speak to any of them if you have questions.
And are we up to date as, this one is for February, to the end of February? So, we're a month behind?
Yes, and we will run a month behind because of the timing of when the Board meetings occur and when the reports are ran, cause they're ran at the end of every month. And then, we don't have time to get them in until the second meeting for that. You know, depending on when the meetings occur. So, they always run about a month behind.
Okay. Other questions?
Nope. And the next one is just on the capital expenditures, and that really just tells you, it's kind of an update, monthly update on the capital and what projects the money is in, if there's been movement in those projects, moving them from one to the other. And that just is specifically listed by capital, for the capital funds.
How is that different from the other one, a Budget Amendment?
The Budget Amendment is all funding sources, and it doesn't get down to the level of the projects. It's an overall budget by fund. This one is specifically for capital projects, and it tells you the projects that the money's being moved in and out of.
Okay. And do we anticipate an, an update on the, since we're getting the tax money in monthly, right?
Yes, ma'am. The sales tax should be coming in monthly at this point. We had our first one that came in.
That was for two.
That was, it was for January. They run two months behind. So, the January collection showed up for us in March, at the end of March for the first time. And now, they should be, start coming in monthly. And we, we're hoping that they stay at the level that the first one was, which is about 6.3 million.
And is there a specific day we get them, or does that fluctuate?
It fluctuates. It's at the end of the month, probably around like the 28th or something, I think, is when, I think the thing would come out. And there is a site, and I think you actually sent the information out, where you can go to that site and look and see when those are updated.
Right.
Okay.
What's the site just?
It's the Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue, yes. And I can resend that link out to you all.
And you put in our Lee County, and then Lee County School District. It tells you when it goes out and, and how much it was and that type of thing. And then, we also have our new site that we talked about to keep, for the citizens on the website, to keep track of what's being spent and drilling.
And that's like that live down.
That, that's live now?
It's live now, yes. And it's, they updated every, refresh it every night, so the following day, the information is up to date.
Okay.
And I did notice that, that you all were meeting with Joe Mazurkowitz?
We actually met with Mr. Schimp.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, that was Steve Schimp. We, of course, have been meeting with the Sales Tax Committee, and we're working on the way that we're going to be presenting the expenditures to them in a manner that they would like to have, cause we don't wanna give, not give them enough information. So, we worked with Mr. Schimp to get exactly what they want, so.
And I believe that's somewhere on our agenda. I saw a question about it, to have, to add ISOC to our briefings.
Yes, we, we did have a brief discussion on that with, with the Chair, and so, similar to the Board Advisory Committee updates, we're going to work with ISOC to provide an update, a brief update to the Board after their meeting, yeah, after their quarterly meeting.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Anyone else find it? Thank you. Okay, and now we have Human Resources, and she's there, right?
Any questions?
Oh, I like that. Yes, Ms. Fisher.
Can we deny Mr. Dotig's resignation?
I was gonna bring attention to that.
We have already got that in process, yes. We, we, we have some rope in the back and some gag, and you got the duct tape. Good, okay, all right.
Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
I'm wondering how the Board feels about this. When we have the Approval of Personnel Recommendations, it's all, it's administrative.
Certified.
Certified. I mean, it goes from, it could go from a chief down to a trade worker in maintenance. I would like the Board opinion on whether, going forward, and if this is possible, that executive-level positions, perhaps Director and above. that executive-level positions, perhaps Director and above, or what's considered Executive Director and above?
Well, administrative is coordinator and assistant principal above. Executive Directors and Chiefs.
Yeah.
I'm talking about Chief, Executive Director.
Executive Directors and Chiefs.
The higher-level positions, if there's going to be any controversy, if there's going to be any discussion, it stands to reason that these are going to be the positions that we'll be discussing. I mean, I'm not going to go through a list of guest teachers and go, are you sure you want to hire Joe Smith for this? You know, they're pretty standard. But what I'm wondering about is if, moving forward, the Board has any inclination for maybe separating out these things, if for no other reason than to give the public a little bit more information and?
And we've actually, I've discussed that, we discussed that already. I don't know what the possibilities.
Well, I discussed providing information for the Board, but nothing relative to a Board Agenda item. So I would defer to Dr. Atkins.
What you discussed was instead of just having, for somebody new, and it wouldn't pertain to this next meeting, but for somebody new, instead of just having a name, to have, for instance, these are non, well, I guess now there is going to be a salary scale, but that we know something more about the individual than just the name out there. We discussed that. But what I'm asking is if anybody would feel inclined to have these positions voted on separately just because they are ones that come out more to public scrutiny, they're?
I defer to Dr. Atkins.
You had a comment?
Yeah.
Well, I do, I know that, you know, I had a real brief conversation with Mr. Williams on this, I believe. So let me talk to him a little bit more and I can provide a recommendation. But I do believe that, I'm going to model an example here in just a moment. I do want you to be well-aware of executive-level positions, the background credentials. Dr. Pruitt and I have discussed, she's put.
That was the packet that I, yeah.
That provides you with the process that has been, that staff has done in order to arrive at a decision, where it's been advertised, who was screening it, how the applicant was interviewed. So that is all, you know, my intention to bring that forward to you all and then give you periodic updates in this piece right here, I mean, as we're briefing the Board. So for, as an example, this isn't a perfect example, but I'm just going to take this opportunity so that everybody knows that we did have one applicant that had been our finalist in the Executive Director Operations position. That was, you know, the position Mark Morrow was previously in, that I was going to be recommending to the Board. And, you know, I think with majority of folks, I at least shared a resume and some references and talked about it. But anyway, that was the person, that was, Mr. Quirk was going to come forward. He has declined to take advantage of the position. And so we're going to reconvene as a team this week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yeah, we only have one day, right? And we're going to look at both positions, Executive Director Transportation, Executive Director Operations. So, and then determine how we're going to move forward. But this would be the opportunity that, the reverse of this would be, here's the recommendation I'm going to be bringing forward. This is the credentials. This is the process that we use to get there. And I think this is a good setting and then everybody hears it at one time. Yes, ma'am.
So those two positions, did we do a national search on that or is that just a PeopleSoft search as well? No, we did national searches.
And actually, you know, I misspoke the last one when we talked about even the CFO position. I mean, it was advertised externally, as I understand it.
Just in PeopleSoft. It didn't go out anywhere else. It was just, it was open to external candidates, but it wasn't advertised anywhere.
Okay, I misunderstood you then. Thank you.
Anything else for me?
I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
So is there no comment on whether to separate?
Oh, well, I'm sorry. I didn't need to avoid that.
I'm just curious what the Board feels about.
The way I took it was that I would, you know, I'll look at that and address.
Okay, you said.
Bring back a recommendation.
Right.
And I'll give the rationale why. We can do that easily.
Oh, okay.
Right. And then what I, what we had discussed, Dr. Pruitt and I too, was giving, you know, how the search was done, the, you know, how many finalists, the basic information like that that we would see. And then if you have follow-up questions, you can still ask those. But the basic kind of, this is how we got where we're at and here's where we are.
I understand that. I was just curious if there's anybody else on the Board that would be inclined that way or not. And if nobody is, then there's no point in taking.
I know, what does everyone else, she's talking about rather.
That's what I was asking.
So rather than one big consent for HR, we would have HR, administrative or whatever and above, and then the regular HR, is that what you?
That's what I was asking. I'm just curious how the rest of the Board feels on that.
So I'm trying to see how that would look. So are you seeing like APs and principals and separated out from the?
Above that, Executive Directors and Chiefs.
Just only those above, and then keep, and separating them out? So we would vote individually? That's what I'm trying to understand, your, what your process is.
Yeah, that's what I was, I'm just asking for Board feeling.
Well.
That's it.
I guess it's all going to depend on how he, his recommendation, when he comes back around and says, because if we have this, I think, first of all, I'm loving this conversation, like how this is happening. And so I think we might be able to not have to do what you're saying because we're having this conversation like this, in this open concept. So I think that, that being said, I think I have to wait and see how he brings it to us because we may not even need to do what you're talking about. And I think the reason why you brought it up is because we've been lumping them together and you don't know, without individual, you don't know who's who, but it doesn't matter, we don't really know anyways. But it's just for the public to have, to be able to weigh in, I think, a little bit. And that's, or us weigh in and know that we did our job, I think, right? So.
As I say, I'm just curious how, since like in the sunshine, can't ask you individually, I'm just.
Well, can we agree then, I'm sorry.
No, so it's all under Human Resources. It's already disaggregated, administrative, certified, and support, tech support. So.
I think that what they were talking about though was the ability to vote on one or the other.
Because of the last, because of the last meeting.
Because of the last situation.
I see.
That if you, if it's a consent item that says HR and there's administrative and everybody in there, when you vote yes or no on consent for HR, you're voting for all.
Yeah, and no disrespect, but it's been my experience that we've had that information before the recommendation came to us at the business meeting. So I'm not sure what the impetus is for that.
Well, I think what we can do for sake of time too is take Dr. Atkins' recommendation to see how this plays out in future. And then if we need to, we can revisit it. Is that okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Because what happened last time, we had two people under administrative and we voted for both. If we separated it out, for instance, in public record, I voted no. I wanted to vote no on just one of the candidates, not both, but I voted no because.
Because it was all together.
Because it was all together. So that's my, that was my impetus for asking. And I respect everybody's opinion, so what everybody wants to do. But that's why I was asking if anybody else felt that.
And you can always vote no, but I do believe that Mr. Dodig did let us know that we can deny the Superintendent's recommendation only for good cause. And that's specified in the statute, so.
If I could just weigh in here.
Please, thank you.
I understand Ms. Vaughn's concern. And there was a time when Executive Director and above, including me at one time as the staff attorney, the individuals, the Superintendent would read orally the recommendation for each of those positions. So I think that's what you're talking about.
So it's not, it's not like something I pulled out of the sky.
Right, no. It was done at one time and every year for about seven years, I had to come here when my contract was approved every year for the Board, so.
So it's something we can look at possibly in the future.
Define good cause, please.
Good cause means the individual's not qualified professionally or in some cases morally to do the job. And qualifications professionally means they, you're hiring a plumber and the person's an airline pilot.
Okay.
Or the qualifications don't match.
Sorry, okay. We have a comment, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for that clarification again. Because I know you did give that to us, but now we have it clearly. So thank you.
Okay, and now we have operations. Thank you for standing there, guys.
This is a bid regarding plumbing?
Yes.
Behind me, okay.
Maybe what we can do is set up something up front.
Well, that's a good point. I mean, I think we were kind of talking here at the beginning of the meeting that in the future, you know, we could do something to where they could have, be right here.
Yeah.
Okay. Just a question, is it ready?
You're up.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Board, Dr. Atkins and fellow colleagues. The Plumbing Repair Services bid is a new ITN which replaces a previous ITN for plumbing repair services. The purpose of this bid is pretty much to cover any large-scale plumbing repair projects that consume a lot of resources and would take away time from our district department staff to, you know, from doing their daily operations tasks. This ITN, my apologies, will cover projects such as Cypress Lake High School water main upgrades, Pine Island Elementary School water main upgrades, and maintenance services, day-to-day repairs. With this bid, the contractor is being requested that they provide turnkey services for the projects that they have been awarded to or been given the job to. I'm not sure if that covers.
No, that's fine. Anyone have questions? And is this, is this a renewal or new?
This is going to be a brand-new, well, it replaces a previous ITN.
Oh, okay.
So do you, I'm sorry, do you want to comment on the fact that one vendor submitted a response and 24 vendors did not respond?
Yes, I'll let Mr. Ross explain that process.
Yes, hello, Frederick Ross, Director of Procurement Services. So this was actually the second time we put this ITN out on the street. After the first one, we only had one response. We reached out to vendors, several vendors to, you know, understand why they did not bid. And the response, the few responses we got was number one, we have enough work right now. We're in the area right now where construction is thriving. So a lot of these, you know, they already, they have work. The second thing we learned was the emergency part of it. They didn't want to have to be able to pull their crews off a job that they're doing now to do district emergency work. So those, that was the two feedback we got back. So kind of what we did to change that, we kind of separated the emergency piece out of the second solicitation that we did. So you could, you were able to bid on normal day-to-day projects and then also bid on the emergency portion as well. Unfortunately, we still got one bid. But through the negotiation process, we were able to discuss with that vendor, make sure they had capacity. And in addition, we've identified local piggybacks that we could utilize with Florida Southwest University and I think Lee County as well. The prices are higher than the prices we were able to negotiate, but as a backup plan, those are available to piggyback.
Thank you.
How does the piggyback contract work? So in other words, if you hired ABC firm to do it and they couldn't and you needed something right away, is it an emergency contract? I'm not sure how that works.
So if it was, if it's something that we needed right away, we would try to do that under emergency services and get that process going. But if we had time to plan and get a Board through the agenda process, we could get that piggyback in place. And basically, the way that works is, for example, Florida Southwest currently has a bid or ITN for plumbing services and they've awarded one or more vendors. We could, we would bring that to the Board, get that piggyback approved by the Board, and then we could begin using one or multiple of those vendors at those same prices and terms and conditions as the FSW contract has. So that is, that contract would have already gone through the bidding process. So that gives us the authority to piggyback.
So is it feasible then to set up a piggyback as just in case?
Yes, and there are some areas, I think one, in transportation with tires, you know, we have a backup piggyback in place just in case, so.
So we don't have to come back and do this over?
Correct. So that could be an option.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A fire alarm?
Okay.
She's there.
Sorry, I have a hot book here. So basically, the fire alarm systems, this is approval to renew this RFP. The, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. The RFP is awarded to All Digital Technology Integrated Fire and Security Solutions Inc. and Johnson Controls. This is the first renewal period out of the two approved renewal years. Basically, Maintenance Services will be the group that will utilize this bid for the maintenance and repair fire alarm systems and software, as well as to purchase and replace effective parts associated with fire alarm systems. Some of the other things that can take place under this bid will be to perform additional reprogramming of existing software that's existing in the schools.
I'm good.
Anybody, everybody good on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
And next, Ceiling Tile Acoustic Wall Installation and Materials.
This is a recommendation for approval to renew this Ceiling Tile Acoustical Wall Installation and Materials RFP. The RFP is awarded to Acoustical Engineering Company of Florida. This RFP will be utilized by the Maintenance Services Department for the purchase and installation of ceiling tiles, acoustical walls, installation and other related materials. The, my apologies. This RFP will also be utilized to include acoustical panels, acoustical tiles, exposed suspension systems, insulation, support wires, and wall replacements. And again, the contractor will be performing turnkey services with this RFP.
Do we have anywhere on details of these items that says whether it's a new or not? Maybe that's a, no, please go ahead.
No, if you read the public content, it says that the RFP was awarded on May 17th of 2016.
It's a renewed, it's the final year of the three-year contract.
I get it, okay. I'm just looking for less reading. Yes.
So then I just wanted to point out though, although there were renewal options for two more years, this renewal is only for the next year, for one more year.
Yeah, the Board, well, the Board always, we have to come to the Board and get approval annually for every expenditure. So even if you have a multi-year contract, we'll still come to the Board and we'll ask for your approval. We'll say this is the second year of a three-year contract or this is a first renewal.
It says approval to renew, right?
Right.
So I didn't read that part.
Well, no, Susan.
I know. If you just read, okay.
And I was just pointing that out so that people who have not.
Right, we had one like that, I think, before a long time ago, so I was just asking, thank you. Okay. All right, any questions on that one? And we're fine? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is a piggyback on Sawani. That's a long way away.
Modular Buildings.
Yeah, so I'll speak for, I'll speak for this one. This is for our Construction Department, the lease and/or purchase of portables throughout the district. Currently, we have 22 portables leasing at a monthly cost of just over $14,000 a year. And then there's an additional in there for, in case. And then there's an additional in there for, in case on as-needed basis as the different zones increase, just room in there in case additional portables are needed. But this is just the annual expenditure on a piggyback for modular buildings.
Can I ask for an artifact and an additional document in here or provided that tells us where we're at with portables right now?
In terms of specifics on where the portables at the districts are probably leasing.
Right, like how many we have and location and that type of thing. And I don't know if you just would send that to us individually?
Yes, I believe Scott Rickmacher with the construction department, he's out on our medical issue today, but he would have that information.
Just an update to see where we're at.
Okay.
And I, if it is okay with chair, if we could do that, like as a separate item, I have, you know, we can provide that to the board and not.
Oh, that's fine.
Later.
Yeah. No, it's really good to know.
It's just good information.
How we're doing on that. That would be great.
We will do that.
All right.
All right.
And.
Cabinets.
Cabinets.
Yes.
So the last item for maintenance services is cabinet services, and this is, includes like turnkey services for this type of service. This is an ITN, and the anticipated projects for the upcoming year are the Alva School, Fort Myers Middle School, and funds would also be utilized for maintenance services day-to-day repairs. The reasons for replacement of these units is because of their lifespan. Some of them are chipped, they're falling apart, they need to be upgraded for classroom usage. As far as the maintenance services day-to-day, some of the obstacles and challenges that we face with cabinets could be the age of the equipment, breaks, repairs, wear and tear, could be water intrusion, could be other things such as termites and et cetera, et cetera. So those are some of the reasons why we would have day-to-day repairs in that field.
And is this going to come out of, are taxes is budgeted for that since we are doing maintenance with the tax money?
These projects right here, we earned, these are the forecasted projects that will be funded with capital dollars, day-to-day funding.
That's right, okay.
Could you explain on the maintenance services, the day-to-day repairs, why that's contracted out rather than being done in-house?
Could be the size of the project and the timeframe. It takes some time for our shop to go ahead and build some of these cabinets. It takes, you know, especially if we have projects already aligned. If an emergency does come about, that interrupts that original project that the department was handling, so this would be like a secondary set of resources that can be utilized to help with those.
I'm just talking about repairs.
Okay, yes, and that's correct. So those repairs, like I mentioned earlier, can be attributed to, if there was a, let's say for instance, a lake, and now it affected, impacted a whole series of areas. So if our building craft shop was backed up with existing projects that schools have already requested, this would be a secondary set of resources that we can utilize to make those repairs happen in immediate, in a faster response time.
Okay, so in other words, this would be used if there was a backup, but we do have the resources in-house to do some repairs also. Because I have a hard time finding.
No problem, ma'am.
That we're going to have an emergency.
No, no ma'am.
Have an emergency with a shelf or something.
No.
I've talked and I know how long sometimes.
No, ma'am, I actually come from Miami Dade, Miami Dade County, and when I came to our cabinet services shop, it was pretty impressive because we build the majority of all of our cabinets in-house.
Yeah, because I, and actually, I've toured maintenance.
Yes, ma'am.
And I saw.
Yes, yes.
Beautiful work to be done, and that's what brought me.
When you guys sit down at the, in the conference room in Dr. Atkins' area, we made that table and everything that goes along with it.
I mean, you guys do wonderful work, so that's why.
Yes, ma'am, we encourage every one of you guys to come down and meet everyone. We have a great, we have a great group. I handle some stuff in maintenance that's kind of very unique. I handle, for example, insurance and benefits, and that's a side item to everything, and I picked it up because there was a lapse in coverage or a gap. So for example, what we would utilize a contractor for, for something we typically would do in-house, so for example, there's a flood in say, yes, there was a flood in Skyline. It was a blackwater flood that incurred in a bathroom and it flooded and leached into the adjacent classroom. That adjacent classroom has what you call toe kicks. The bottom part of your cabinet is a four-inch gap and it's a toe kick. It's typically made of compressed wood and it can't be dried out. So when that toe kick comes in and it gets wet, we have to replace the toe kick. Why we're in there, if for some reason the toe kick, when removing the toe kick, a cabinet was damaged where the famica was pulled off and we can't just simply put another piece of famica on because it doesn't match, we would utilize a contractor services for that point because we have to go back in and reskin all of those. And we don't have the personnel because the majority of our cabinet services are in-house, meaning that we build them in-house and we set a separate crew to go out and install them. So with that installation crew not being as adept to do the repair work, it's easier for us to contract those small jobs out. But it was pretty hard for us to find a contractor that was willing to do the cabinet work that we needed. So we try to take as much of that on as we possibly can.
Yeah, thank you. That was very detailed and.
I try to, because.
Yeah, that was a great explanation.
I appreciate that.
That's exactly what I wanted.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, just on a side note, it's interesting to me that the cabinet people that will be fixing floods is called Morden Waters, but.
No, it, they.
Just a thought.
And just on a flood, for example, there's so many different people that get involved, you know, with blackwater, you know, we have to cut 24 inches of drywall, so you have a drywall contractor involved, you have a cabinet contractor involved, you have a carpet guy involved, and then there's so many different things that go involved. And we have to get those people back in those classrooms as quick as we possibly can. You've got, your teachers, and my wife's a teacher. So I, my wife teaches ESE pre-K, so I don't want her kids that are kind of adapted to those classrooms to be displaced for long periods of time. So I take that into account in every classroom that we get involved with. How can I get in there with minimal disruption, get in and get out as fast as we possibly can? And if it means utilizing that contractor for a small period of time and he has the availability, we'll do that. If not, I'll beg, plead with Randy James and get him to do it. But either way, we weigh all those things, all those options out and we get them back in as quick as we can.
Yeah, that makes me mindful.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, may I, just before they leave the podium, would you just introduce yourselves and tell us your title?
Yes, please.
Because we have a few folks at the table that we're asking.
Barbara Sidino, Assistant Director of Maintenance Services.
Jimmy Thompson, I do it all in maintenance.
And thank you for your passion.
Very much, ma'am, I appreciate it. Thank you guys.
Thank you all so much. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Attorneys' recommendations, thank you all for coming.
Well, I, there's two recommendations from my last meeting.
You say that one more time. Where's the deputy?
I presented them to you before the meeting, so if you had questions, I would have been happy to answer them, still happy to answer them. The first one is revisiting an issue. When the board asked me to opine about something else, I pulled it, and it's now back on the agenda. And the second is the resolution regarding school resource officers, which is interesting timing because the Senate today had a second reading of the security bill on which passed, and it will be set for third reading here in the near future, so.
We got those changes yesterday, I think from Ashley.
So the resolution talks about SROs providing security in our schools. Any questions?
Can you just update us on the Senate reading because I hadn't had a chance to read it?
Sure. What I know of it, because we've been here for part of it, is that 7030, which is the Senate bill, which now includes some of the House version of the bill, including the portion providing authority to school boards to vote to ask the sheriff, not ask the sheriff, direct the sheriff to use the Guardian program in schools, is now included in the Senate bill. There's also a provision which you need to be aware of that would provide that the school district, if you choose SROs, will work with charter schools to provide SROs in their schools.
At a cost to us or them?
It appears to be to the school district, to school boards.
And the option is still there, though, from what I understood, for us to choose or not to choose Guardian?
Correct. No, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
But it does, the charter school language is new, and it appeared in the committee substitute bill as recently as earlier this week, so.
Okay. Thank you. Rockles and smiles, comments?
So, okay, Dr. Atkins, well, maybe both, but so with this charter school language, are we being premature by making this resolution at this point in time? Should we be holding off until maybe this Senate bill and maybe have another discussion? Are we, or is this setting this in stone for us to live and die by?
It's a resolution as to the board's position at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just, I'll just take advantage of this opportunity to give you just a little bit of an update. We did have a gentleman come down from, I think Department of Education toured around with, or floor Department of Law Enforcement, I can't recall which one right now, with Mr. Parfit. And we had a situation in Harlem Heights where they were utilizing a security guard and then they were having a roving deputy. I have asked at the, really the, the, basically the Department of Education indicated that they didn't feel that that would meet the requirements, so we went ahead and worked with Captain Miller to assign a deputy to that building so that they have security guard, and originally they had a roving police officer or a school resource officer that was, that would stop in there on a daily basis, as I understand it now, you have a, again, that charter school has a deputy now assigned to it. And then there's another case, and I'm giving you this just to think about all the things that you have to consider with keeping in compliance with the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act, but we had an officer at one of our police agencies that had to take a leave, and so again, the Sheriff's Department has stepped up to cover the remainder of the year for that situation, so keeping us in compliance. But it does, does have its challenges.
Oh, I know.
As it would regardless of which direction we would, we would go, you know, it's, but I wanted just to keep you posted on that.
What about?
Oh, I'm sorry, and one last thing. I had asked, I think, you know, I think we have to really take extra steps to make sure that we are in compliance with the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act, so I've worked with Mr. Williams to work with our auditing department, so Bob Brown.
We met yesterday.
And, he met.
We met yesterday.
Okay. So I've asked Mr. Brown to do an internal audit for us, so just to make sure that we are in compliance. And I just thought, you know, this is an opportunity for us to put another set of eyes on this, you know, so it's not just, doesn't fall just on Mr. Parfit and safety and security, but also another department is coming in independently and looking at our compliance level and we'll report back, and then I'll report back to you.
Our, I just was wondering about this, schools like Quality of Life Center, do they have just the preschool, I guess during the day, and then it's basically an after-school program? So how does that work with this, it's private and so we don't have to?
It's their choice or option, they're not required to.
To do anything, okay.
We have, with our charter schools, we do provide funding for our charter schools in terms of a safety, or the Safe Schools Grant, and that funding is contingent on what their population is. And now, in the case of, you take a school like the Cape charters and Gateway Charter and schools like that, I think they receive, you know, a pretty decent amount of dollars so they're able to secure SROs as well. It's our, the smaller schools is where we have our challenges. You know, Mr. McCullers talked about the enrollment of some of these buildings being, you know, having to cross a certain threshold before they're really viable financial entities. If you have it, if you have a charter school fall below a certain amount, it's very, very difficult just to provide the number of services you need to remain viable. You know, we even see that, you know, at our small schools, if you look at like a Fort Myers Beach, it's more costly for us to operate Fort Myers Beach than it is Patriot Elementary School as a, in terms of a per-student basis. But I think moving forward with this act, that those smaller entities are going to be where we see most of our, our biggest challenges.
Right. For sake of time, I.
Just kidding.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes.
That just made me think, so these three new charters, would we have to work with them to have three new SROs? And that's, are we budgeting for that or, it's not in their budget? I mean, so, so how does that?
Let me just caution us, this is still legislation. It hasn't passed the House. It's on third reading in the Senate. I don't know what the House will do.
That's true, but.
So potentially, they would have to have SROs and.
Okay.
They're supposed to use their Safe School money, which this legislation does say, the cost of the SRO for a charter can exceed the amount of the Safe School money they receive, which may or may not pay for the entire SRO.
Okay.
So, Dr. Atkins, could you just address briefly the situation where the county and at least one of the municipalities is asking us to pay.
The city.
The full cost of the SRO when currently it's a 50-50 deal, right?
Yes, currently we have a 50-50 cost share. I think one of the, the questions that has come up is whether or not we can use our ad valorem capital dollars, which we really typically refer to as our capital outlay dollars, which is the 1.5 mil, can we use that to pay for school resource officers? We have indicated that, obviously, we cannot use capital dollars for that. Now then, the next question is, well then, can you use that to offset costs somewhere else freeing up dollars to pay for SROs? Well, as you recall, what we have done as a part of our budget process is we are using capital outlay dollars to pay for our employees in certain cases that are working on maintaining our capital assets, such as in our maintenance department, such as in some of our IT department, and then those funds that were being used to pay for those employees are being used to help pay for teachers in the classrooms, paraprofessionals, you know, so that's getting put towards support staff, that's getting put towards schools. So they're not dollars that we think are, that we, in our opinion, are dollars for school resource officers, these are dollars for, you know, teachers, paraprofessionals, you know, support staff, et cetera.
Okay.
That's a part of the compensation package. If you remember the presentation, there's that $5 million in that presentation, that's what I'm referring to.
Exactly.
Which we say is a transfer to help offset our operating costs.
Okay. I have one question on the, the number one on that firearm piece, and I was not here in privy to all the whens and wheres and whys of that. One of my concerns, if we go forward with this, is the cost, is there a cost for, you know, this investigation to continue? And then also, if we're looking at in the near future having an attorney firm that we're paying on an hourly basis, is this going to be adding to our costs?
No, there's no cost to ask for an Attorney General opinion. There's no investigation going on. What it would provide is an opinion from the Attorney General on that question, and I plan on providing that letter to them before I leave.
Okay.
And then you all would receive that at some point in the near future. I've had several conversations with one of the Assistant Attorney Generals who has asked us to do this, and her and I have determined essentially that we would withdraw the previous request, submit a new one, and they would go from there.
Go forward, okay.
I don't anticipate there being any costs.
Okay. And because of the time, yes, go ahead.
Can you just explain that our, we don't have a policy that's governing this situation? It's not an investigation, I think it's.
That's right.
It's a clarification.
It's a clarification, so the board can at some point, if it chooses, develop a policy regarding possession of firearms at your meetings.
Okay.
That's the purpose of it.
All right, because of the time, I, first of all, thank you all that stayed. I personally feel it was very helpful to do this, and in actuality, we went through the whole agenda in about 30, 30. in about 30, 35 minutes. So if that's, and this is a pretty long agenda that had quite a few things. So if that's indicative of the future, we'll be able to definitely, you know, get through items. I know sometimes there will be more questions, but I, I'm happy to see that we got through it. Comments?
Well, yes, I'm, I'm very happy with the way things went, I believe. I think, you know, it gives us an opportunity to provide information and answer questions. I would ask, though, you know, this is first time through. I know staff will probably be better prepared moving forward in the future.
Fine, that'd be great.
If, yeah, I think for just asking them to come up, I mean, you know.
No, but I, I really think they did a wonderful job.
Me too.
Thank you.
If I may, just say that that shows the kind of work that staff is doing day after day, and that they are on top of what, what they're dealing with.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And this was short notice to do this and start the process, but I think it's, you know, it's like jumping off the, into the pool off the diving board. You have to just take the dive and see where we go, and it seems like we're doing swimmingly, so.
Madam Chair, if I could, May 2nd, it appears as though you're going to do this again, and my next day is the next day. Would you want your outside attorney to be here that day to listen to the agenda items that are important to the board?
I believe, if we are, if we can move forward on the process and get this finalized for Tuesday, Susan has a comment. Yes. Okay, well, we will, we will work with.
Well, I just need to know, because Mr. Williams and I need to talk to the outside house.
And we'll let, we'll let you know that, to be sure.
Well, I think.
Well, no, either date doesn't, either date doesn't matter, it's going to be the first.
You want them, yes, we would like to have them here.
I think it would be beneficial.
Answers your question, yes.
Okay, thank you.
To kind of pass the torch or whatever.
Well, no, they will need.
I know, okay. Any other comments or questions? We are over time, and I know people have other obligations, but if, if others have comments, no?
I don't have a comment, I just have, okay, so like typically, when we meet, our one-on-ones, it's never really been over the agenda items, so this is kind of all new. So how do we, how will you do some of the things that you talk to us? I mean, how will that, will that happen like today? I mean, like this, in the same format? So you, okay, so, like typically, our day is, our time was now.
Right, right.
You know, or was over with.
Well, and, and I'm thinking that if we, if we do the agenda piece first, and, you know, and let staff go on and do what they need to do, then maybe we can, there are some kind of like items on our superintendent piece. And that we can pull up the superintendent piece and the things that are for all of us, we can run through those really quickly. Like I said, we went through this whole thing in 30, 35 minutes.
The majority of those items, when I start looking at them, you know, are things that we could certainly cover in this format, so we could quickly cover them all at the same time, and everybody hears the same thing. You know, there are the times when board members have individual items, and we could, you know, we could schedule individual time to do that. So part of it is that you don't have to come up here and meet every week.
Sometimes personnel things cannot be spoken like that, like publicly.
Right. So I think in those cases, either we do the one-on-one, or the other thing I've started doing is just trying to call everybody on those things the day of. Like if I get something hot on a personnel item, then I'm going to start trying to call and not wait for the individual meetings. I'm going to get in touch with you that way, or if it's another kind of a hot item.
So then, along with this activity or exercise, we will be able to have less individual meetings with you. There won't be really as much of a need for that.
No, I think the phone calls should be sufficient.
There should not be.
Unless there's some pressing issue, we can call for an appointment.
We can continue if there's something, too, to send out that email. If there is a question, maybe there was one that we left here and it wasn't answered, then you can have staff send out, like we've been doing, that this is the answer. Just respond to everybody.
So the next one, the next meeting, I won't be here, so will I be able to call in and be privy that way?
Sure.
Yes.
So are we, are we going to zap the one-on-ones?
If it's on video.
Well, I think it's not.
On the calendar.
It's not, it's, I think that'll be a personal between.
If we're doing this in lieu of, if we're doing this experiment.
Don't need to unless you want to. I don't want it on record that this is replacing your one-on-ones. So I'm not saying that it's replacing. Ladies.
I'm sure we did, so.
Let's all finish real quick, Ms. Jevon Ali. Ladies, hold on one second so we can finish. I'm just saying, I don't want it to seem like we are saying we're replacing the one-on-ones. Please, by all means, know that the superintendent is open and available, that if there's something you need to discuss, that he's open to do that.
Wasn't that the point of doing the workshop, to free up that time? The seven hours is the whole.
In an extent, but there are times when that can't be done in this venue.
Oh, Madam Chair, I could, I would, I would, let's do it this way, then. If, I would like to go over and free up that time for all of us, the time that's scheduled in yours. And then if, if you need to meet individually, just get in touch with, with, get in touch with me through Malika, and we can get that time on the calendar.
You can have mine.
Okay.
I'll start it, you can have mine. Wednesday's at 3:00.
We have to talk.
As the chair, yes, I understand.
All right, anyone else, any comments? And thank you to everyone that was involved, and I, yeah, sorry?
Was that good of you, or?
Oh, no, did you?
You have a good one?
I just have a short one.
Okay.
Okay, just a little thing about listening. Listening is the key to all effective communication. Without it, we have misunderstanding.
I think I heard you. Okay, well, thank you so much, everyone, and I think we are adjourned. And next time formally will be Tuesday. I believe we have, we will, like I said, have some briefing meetings because there are certain things that have to be covered, but guess what? It doesn't look like we have one on Tuesday, correct, Susan? And Jen?
There's a brief.
We do?
A brief, you'll get something.
All right, and we will make sure everybody is informed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.